About what staff has encountered, some, um, some numbers with you as well as some shoes that we're not able to address with our customers. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and go from there.
Good evening. Um, like the chief said, this ordinance went into effect January 1, 2024. So we've been, um, under it for over a year now, year and a half. Um, you have the numbers in attachment A from 2023, 2024, and then to date 2025. It's a breakdown of all the different kind of code types we get. Um, so these are each complaints. The numbers you see there are complaints. Um, and you can see that over average 2024, 2025, since the ordinance went into effect, the two new things that we added were, um, dangerous trees and grass height, and those account for about 20% of the complaints we've received. So it's, it's quite a bit. Um, overall, I would say that the ordinance is working well. It's nice to have it all compiled together and have the same fee structure. Um, that's been helpful in educating our, um, citizens. But there's a few things that maybe we found aren't meeting the, um, citizens desires, um, what the community wanted or intended to have done with the ordinance. So we just want to bring those items back and see if, um, US Council want to recommend any changes to those. Um, so these are the 12 items the mayor highlighted. I'll go through. We have just a couple pictures for each one. Um, they're all in your staff report, but I wanted to make sure everybody could see them. Um, and then at the end, we highlight again the, the numbers so we can go through each item specifically. Uh, okay. So the first one is vermin, the presence of vermin. If you recall, um, this was proposed to be in the nuisance ordinance and did not pass for several reasons. Many of the citizens that spoke were concerned about how we defined vermin, um, how we were going to regulate them since they're pretty transient, they move around. Um, other jurisdictions, uh, enforce conditions that harbor vermin. So the picture on the left up there is kind of just overgrown yard. Um, we had a complaint of a groundhog living here, which was very hard to identify. There were some holes, um, visible. The picture on the right, I will say is not in your packet. Um, we added that today. It's very hard to tell, but it's raccoon feces from a residence that is infested with raccoons. It's a vacant, vacant property. Um, so there's raccoons living in it, and that's one of the, um, questions we have for you is if you want to change the ordinance to, um, include standards that would prohibit conditions that harbor vermin, or maybe you just want to prohibit, um, infestations of vermin. So if we find houses, uh, this one, animal control went out to and actually trapped a few raccoons, some baby raccoons that were coming in and out of the house. So, um, that's how we know that that's present. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't know. Again, um, we'll get to it later in the report, but we can only identify hazards from the public way. Um, so we would not have had authority to enter this property, but animal control did, um, legally enter the property and found several raccoons. So if, um, infestations of homes with, uh, critters is not regulated by our code right now, um, that would be something if you want to add to it, we would. The next one is outdoor storage. So previously, we regulated all items stored outdoors. They couldn't be stored for more than 72 hours. Um, with the nuisance ordinance, when we recompiled it, uh, we did household furniture and appliances. Um, so the picture on the left, I, it's hard to tell, but those are hot tubs, um, standing on their side and covered in tarps. And then on the right, um, just a couple pictures of a bunch of different items that's, it's really hard for us to enforce because those items aren't necessarily, um, indoor items that we would say are household furniture or appliances. So our current code doesn't really address these. Um, the other concern is that often the complaints we're getting are not because there's one bicycle sitting outside. It's an accumulation of bicycles or different items. So, um, not sure how we would write that yet, but if you were interested in, um, addressing it, once that, once the number of items exceeded a certain amount, I'm not sure how we would define that, but that's something we could look into, see what other jurisdictions are doing, um, so that we could better address some of these issues. Next is overgrown vegetation. You might recall that, uh, previously only rental properties were regulated by, for grass heights, 12 inches. Um, now all properties are. So noxious weeds as defined by the state, and then, um, those are all prohibited, and then grass height over 12 inches is prohibited. As you can imagine, there's a lot of vegetation that falls outside of noxious weeds and turf grass that we're not able to regulate, and these photos kind of show examples of that. Um, one thing specifically, I will say, the top right photo, um, the tall vegetation on the left is in the area we consider the right-of-way between the curb and the street, and we have received several questions. I think a lot of people think that area should be kept cut lower. Um, there's no standard right now, so the only standard is that it needs to be cut within a foot of the curb if there's parking on that side of the street. So those properties in the photos are all compliant today, um, but we do continue to get several complaints about properties with, I would say, unmanaged vegetation. Junked vehicles, uh, this one, so the, the ordinance currently says you can have a junk vehicle on your property for up to two days. Um, if you cover it with a tarp or a tight-fitting vehicle cover, it can be there for 30 days. Um, we've encountered a couple concerns with this, um, just based on our definition of junk vehicle, which is mostly copied from other jurisdictions. So it's what a lot of people are using, but we found that, um, for one, the license plate, the registration doesn't really do much. Um, we can have somebody update the registration. They put a new sticker on it, but it doesn't change the appearance of the property. So it's not, it's putting a Band-Aid on something and not fixing the issue. Um, and I think that's, that's what's for council to decide is, uh, most of our complaints are not that the vehicle's actually junked or not operable. It's just that it's been sitting there for a long time. Um, the top right picture, we had several complaints about this vehicle over the last year. Um, it went up and down on jacks, but we just couldn't really prove that it was junked until, um, the property owner let us on the property to see the whole thing. So, um, it's difficult, again, to determine a junked vehicle from the public way because a lot of the components that, uh, meet the junk vehicle definition are within the, the car itself, and we can't view those. Um, so without getting a search warrant to, to enter the property and look in the hood to make sure the engine's there, we can't prove that it's junk. So, um, just in summary, the issue seems to be from, from the community concerns just about vehicles being parked for long periods of time, not necessarily meeting our definition of junked.
I think it's also important to remind council that all the items that you're seeing here tonight are complaint-driven. So we are not proactively going out into neighborhoods. Staff is not looking for these issues. These are issues that often come to you, come through Ames on the Go app, or come directly to staff that we're trying to address tonight. So these are not staff concerns so much as they are customers' concerns that are coming to you.
Uh, this one's been a bit difficult for us, items in the right-of-way. You would think that it's the city street and city staff can say something can't be on the street, um, but it's a little more difficult than that. Um, there's concerns with, like, for example, the vehicle that has the bike and the belongings. Somebody's living in the vehicle. Those are their belongings. They probably shouldn't be in the street. Do we remove them and have a policy to keep them for a certain period of time and let them come back and retrieve those items? Um, other concerns are, you can see the tractor, um, and the, whatever the middle thing is with the sign on it, those, those are not licensed vehicles and shouldn't be on the street. So it's not something that parking can address because there's no license plate or registration. Um, and then just junk that overflow. So we, we know that we don't want it on the street. It's a hazard. It's a safety issue. Um, but we kind of need direction on a, a policy maybe to create with the legal department that would, um, tell us how long we need to hang on to those items and what our authority is to remove them and, and clear the public way. Um, I think our concern is, I don't know how and where we would store a tractor if we had to remove that and what the, what that all entails if we have to move something like that and do it safely without damaging it. Um, so that's just a question. So that one is more of a policy. Um, are we supportive of creating a policy that would help staff, um, remove those items and get them back to their owner if necessary? Uh, recreational vehicles, um, these previously were not allowed. We added them to the ordinance. They can now be parked, um, completely in the backyard or in the side yard on an approved surface. Uh, so this, in, in this photo, the little camper is parked in the front yard at this property and then cannot be stored there. So remember the difference between parking and storage is three days. Uh, so if it's going to be there longer than 72 hours, it really needs to be behind the front of the house. Um, we've received some feedback about this where it's very difficult for people who utilize their campers on a regular basis during the camping season, uh, to, to get the camper home, unload it, load it back up, and leave a couple days later. They might hit a day past, three days, if, you know, four days or so. Um, it, it's an equally difficult thing to enforce because we're not able to enter the property and, um, verify whether it has or hasn't moved. So one of the suggestions was to create an exemption for the, um, summer camping timeframe, uh, which I would recommend using, like, in our rental code, we have a, an, um, standard for when screens need to be on windows, and it's through April through October, basically, um, when normal people would be out. So we could keep something like that and allow maybe a camper to be parked in the front driveway for that time period, but when it becomes winter, then store it. So, uh, that's just one option we heard. Um, it seems reasonable. It seems it would help us enforce and educate. So, um, looking for opinions on that, if you want to allow it in the driveway or keep it behind the front of the house. And then we just had, I think that's the last photo. Um, we just had some, uh, legal reminders and some compliance information. We wanted to highlight, just a reminder again that we cannot enter property without permission. We need to view things from the public way or a neighboring property. So sometimes that makes enforcement difficult. Um, we've also had difficulties enforcing, um, in issuing citations or notices on people that don't want to accept them. So we try to serve it by certified mail. If that doesn't work, we try to use the local police department, uh, wherever that may be to serve it, and there are people that still don't sign for it. So if we're not able to serve them and we can't get to court to get abatement authorized, we're kind of in a standstill. So just wanting you to be aware of that. Um, and then the last one is that, uh, when we do issue a citation, there's really not a mechanism right now that we're using to make people pay the citation. Um, essentially, they could be held in contempt of court, um, but likely at this time, a judge isn't going to sentence somebody to jail time for having a camper in their front driveway. Um, and then, as the chief alluded to, um, we, our goal is to achieve compliance. So if we do have to issue a citation, it's typically to get on the property, but all of these are coming to us as complaints. We don't do any proactive enforcement. Um, and we've noticed, um, that we, we do have some, some people, uh, file complaints more often than others, and that's just fine. Um, we, just a reminder that we do allow anonymous complaints. And I know that a lot of the conversation when we created this ordinance was concern from neighbors about using the ordinance to weaponize their neighbors. Um, so we just want to bring that up, that it is still possible that that happens. We can't vet for that. We, we take a look at every complaint we receive, so we're not trying to determine if it's, you know, if somebody's upset with their neighbor or not. We'll go out and look at it. Um, but the, uh, we've looked at some other jurisdictions, and there is some that don't allow anonymous complaints. You have to have your name on it if you want to file a complaint. Um, so we're just checking in to see if that's something you'd like to look into, um, or not. Um, lots of different thought processes on that one, so it, um, can go either way. I know, I think it's, uh, maybe Justin Clausen can speak more. I think the sidewalk reporting through Ames on the Go, we can set that so that some of them can be reported anonymous and some can't. So it's just a setting in the, in the reporting system. Um, so it seems like an easy adjustment if so desired. Um, and then a couple other things, the, uh, we've, we've noticed with trees specifically, trees are very expensive to take down, um, right now, and people are having difficulties with that. And I think we kind of thought this, this would be an issue. Um, there are people that, when we work with them, are willing to have the citation issued to them so that they can go through the abatement process with the court, and we would go remove the tree for them and assess the cost back to them. So almost using it as a loan, right? So, um, is there interest in establishing some sort of grant program or something to help homeowners with these items? Um, and then if not, uh, for example, I, I think I put it in the report, we had one property that had about 10 trees that needed to come down, and that's, it was, the quote was over $10,000. And so we're looking for direction from council. At, how far do we go on those? Do we really, does the city front the bill for $10,000 to remove all those trees and get it back over time? Or when the property sells, we, we could get it back too. Um, or that we have other things, holes in siding, holes in roofs. Um, if those aren't completed by the owner, how far are we as staff going to go to abate it? Are we, are we going to install new windows? Probably not. Um, but we need some direction from council. Is it a monetary threshold that we, we hit? And after that, we maybe continue issuing citations? Um, it's just not going to, it, it's hard when our goal is compliance and we're kind of stuck and can't achieve it because of the cost. The last thing, I think, is, uh, vacant and abandoned structures. We had a staff report to you in November of 2024, talking about some other jurisdictions that had a property registration process. And the, the thought process there is that we would have updated contact information for the properties that are vacant, um, and be able to reach out to those owners. We do have a hard time, um, getting in contact with some of them, but we'd have in property information, uh, to reach out. Some jurisdictions go so far as to charge a fee. If we get a complaint and we have to do an inspection, they pay for that fee. Um, just kind of as we're babysitting their property a, a little bit for them, and so there's a fee associated, uh, with some jurisdictions. So happy to look more into those and, and different jurisdictions, see what they do, um, regarding vacant structures. We are working with a legal firm I've reached out to about using state code 657A. Um, and that allows us, if we can prove that a structure is abandoned, um, that we can petition the court for the deed to the property, and then the city would, um, take the deed free and clear of any liens, and we would be able then to turn around and sell that so somebody could rehabilitate it or, you know, do something to bring it back on as an active property. Questions? That's a lot.
Questions for Sarah or Chief?
Mayor, do you want to go, um, item by item or just all over the place? How do you want to do that?
She can go item by item. It's fine. Start with vermin. Any questions on vermin?
Sarah, can you remind us why we removed vermin? I mean, what was the, the deal breaker for that?
Um, I think it was the definition of vermin, and what you may deem vermin, your neighbor may not. And so it was people that were trying to encourage natural habitats for critters, um, and then neighbors that wanted no critters. So it was kind of one of those that was right on the line, and we chose to take it out.
So this actually is probably going to jump ahead a little bit to the last item you mentioned, which was 657A, the state code. And if I remember correctly, when I was looking at that, one of the things that's mentioned there is the presence of vermin and, and also uncut vegetation, which relates to another one of these issues. If we were to want to use 657A, does that imply that we then need to add something about vermin and overgrown, uh, properties, or can it stand alone?
I think it can stand alone. So 657A really is, um, if it's an abandoned property, and then it's our job to prove to the court that it is. And that code section lists several different things that could be considered. They don't all have to be true for it to be abandoned, but there's several other things we look at, like utilities, um, taxes being paid, upkeep of the property, the yard, um, critters, all of that would go into. If it meets any of the criteria of chapter 30, our nuisance ordinance, we would use any of those to help, help our case.
So not having, uh, let's say, the, um, harboring of vermin is not going to damage your ability to prove that a structure has been abandoned?
I don't believe so. I think it would only, um, eliminate the ability for us to enforce it here at our local level through the municipal code. So at the state level, I think we could still, it, it's still infested. We can still show that it is. Um, it's just that we wouldn't issue a municipal infraction citation.
And could you say something about the difference between, uh, creating a vermin habitat versus vermin infestation? And is it possible to distinguish between those things? Were we interested in adding something about vermin back into the code?
Yeah, I, I think they're two different things. Um, we have a couple properties now that we know have critters in them. Um, I was in a property several years ago that isn't here now where the owner knew there were raccoons in it and actually put, um, plywood up on the ceiling and had it supported by two-by-fours going to the ground so that the raccoons wouldn't fall through the holes. Uh, so we, we have properties that, that have this, and I think that them being infestation, that means typically, if you recall, there's another section in the, in the ordinance that prohibits houses from having holes and all those kinds of things, but we can't prove that often because it's overgrown. We can't see that side of the property. But if there's animals in there, there's a hole somewhere. Um, and that's, that's what we want to address too. We want to maintain the property so that it can be used. So I think having vermin inside of a dwelling is completely different than maybe having, um, taller vegetation where they may like to burrow and live. Thank you.
Any questions on vermin?
Sarah, um, I appreciate your attention to other, uh, peer cities. And I don't remember you saying something on this one. Is there a best practices with respect to this issue?
Um, so the language that we initially had and took out was basically verbatim what other jurisdictions have. Um, so I'm not sure how there, I'd have to do some, some calling around and asking how they actually define it and interpret it, and if they've had any issues with people, um, feeling differently about different types of animals. Uh, but I can definitely look into that.
And, um, so could you speak a little bit about, um, your office's approach to enforcement? So for example, if you were investigating a property that had, uh, these conditions that would, um, uh, be supportive of vermin, would your approach be to initially try to work with the homeowner first to try to, to rectify the situation, or would it be to, to issue a citation right away? Could you speak to that?
Yeah, so our first contact is either a knock at the door, uh, we'll leave a little door hanger, a phone call, an email if we have it, to the property owner to let them know we received a complaint. Here's the issue. We took a look at the property. We found it to be in violation. Um, sometimes if it's something like a visibility triangle, we'll, we'll print out on the map so they can see exactly where that is, or we'll mark it at the property so they know, um, send them a picture of the tree we need cut. So we really want to work with them. It's so much easier for us if, if we can have a relationship and work with them and they can comply, um, than it is to get to an, a citation process. So if we issue the citation, it wouldn't be until we've notified them two or three times of the issue.
And I knew the answer to this question, but I just think it's helpful for the community to know. And, and I think your department has a good reputation for trying to work with homeowners to try to remediate the situation, and the citation's really a last resort. That's, that's not our goal. Um, so just procedurally, we're going to take public input.
Right.
And so, uh, if, if council wants to make a motion, should we just sort of hold off on those until afterwards?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions on outdoor storage?
I have one, and that is, do we have any sense of how many of these outdoor storage reports have been related to materials that are being stored for sale? Because somebody is, you know, going around to estate sales or auctions or whatever, accumulating things for resale versus simply accumulating things?
I can't speak to whether they're valuable for resale. We do have some people in town that like to accumulate things. Um, and that's because they think that there's value to them or somebody may need it. Whether they're holding on to them for the purpose of having a sale, I'm not sure. I don't think that I've ever talked to anybody that, that said, I'm, I'm putting all of this in my backyard because I want to have a, a sale. I don't think I've heard that.
And do you recall what the rationale was for us to do away with what we previously had, which was all outdoor storage?
So what we previously had, we were using the zoning code, um, the development standards where it says what, um, zones in the city allow outdoor storage. So, um, think of like Walmart. Walmart allows outdoor storage, pallets of mulch, those kinds of things. Um, and they have to be in designated areas on the site plan, um, sometimes screened. Uh, we were using that as outdoor storage, so residential zones don't allow it, and that's what we had, um, and we're using. I don't, I didn't feel that was the right use of that ordinance. Um, and so we thought it was better. We, we still had furniture and appliances. Those were still prohibited, um, in, um, the chapter 17, I think miscellaneous chapter. Um, so now we've moved those into this chapter, and that's, that's it basically, just household materials, anything inside, and then, um, appliances.
And is this currently parallel to our rental housing code?
Yes. Rental housing would prohibit items, furniture, um, appliances, all of that. Um, I will add that a porch is considered exterior if it is not completely enclosed. So I think some people call it the couch ordinance, or, um, that's the, that's the household furniture. It's the same section. Thank you.
Sarah, could you speak to issues of, of your efforts to try to enforce compliance with the outdoor storage?
Um, so outdoor storage is difficult because it's one of those that's over a period of time. And again, if we can't enter the property, we can't mark it. We don't have eyes on it all, all the time. Um, what we've been doing is taking pictures for four days in a row to try to show a judge that the item hasn't moved. Um, a judge could probably go either way and say that we don't have enough evidence that it didn't move, um, or they could have upheld our, our determination and said that they haven't moved. So, uh, sometimes it can go either way. It's very difficult to enforce.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, we have a number of properties in Ames that, um, are just junk yards, and that has a very negative impact on the entire neighborhood. And, um, so I'm, I'm very interested in this because the impact this has on everyone else in that area. Thanks for those comments.
Questions on overgrown, unmaintained vegetation?
Sarah, on those photos that you showed us, was the one that had, no, thank you. Appreciate that, chief. Um, the upper right-hand corner, is that a road or a path?
That's a sidewalk.
Okay.
So the private properties on the right, you can kind of see a fence on the right. That's private property. Um, and then to the left is the right-of-way. So, uh, it's not in violation as long as the sidewalk has a clear path.
So somewhere to the left of the tall stuff is a street?
Correct. You can barely see on the, on the top kind of quarter of the picture, there's a roof of a vehicle that's parked on the street.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sarah, when we put this in place, my concern was it would be difficult for staff to have to decide what yards constitute turf grass and when there are enough weeds in there that would make it qualify to have no limitation. Um, could you speak to the challenges your staff have in terms of delineating which yards, um, are subject to the 12-inch limit and which are not subject to that? Could you speak to that?
Um, yeah, I think actually it's been easier than we thought to determine. Um, it seems pretty clear that the turf grasses are, um, people that just haven't mowed, and anything else with more weeds, different types of vegetation are more people that want a, a more natural landscape. Um, so it's, you, you know, sometimes we can find a blade of grass in, in the weeds, but that's really not the intent. Um, so there's, there's a lot of native, um, landscapes out there that people really like. Um, we have one gentleman who's taken out all of his grass and he's planting, um, I think it's creeping time. He wants low-growth ground cover. Um, that's his desire. This code allows him to do that. Um, so it doesn't look like your traditional yard that you mow, um, but it, it meets his goals of what he wants in his yard. Um, so it, it has helped. I, it's hard. We've kind of discussed like the difference between intentional plantings and non, or, or an intentional yard, if you really want it to be more natural. Our, our ordinance allows that now. Um, if you just don't mow your grass, um, it prohibits that.
And could you speak to best practices here? Do other cities have a disparity between, uh, weeds and turf grasses?
Um, not to my knowledge. Many- Not to my knowledge. Many cities that we looked at ranged anywhere really from six inches to 18 inches in height for turf grass. That was pretty common across them all, and then noxious weeds. There was really no other differentiation between just general overgrowth.
Okay, thank you.
Did you clarify that? You're saying, so that's similar to what our ordinance is? People are allowed to let weeds grow as high as they want to in their yards, is that right?
Yep.
Thank you. Questions on junk vehicles?
Sarah, this is a question like the outdoor storage. Do we know how many of these supposedly junked vehicles are there? Because somebody says, "I have a business restoring cars and I have a few of these vehicles." I think I remember hearing that, but I don't know how many complaints you've gotten where people have actually said that.
Yeah, I would say we have a handful of people that work on cars regularly, and they switch them around in their drive and have several there at a time that they're tinkering with. I would say the majority of the complaints, though, are vehicles that just are sitting there, not actively being worked on. I think, I can think of maybe one property where we have somebody who's very actively working on vehicles, but they constantly move, they're in and out, he's moving them around. It doesn't seem to be a problem, it's really those that aren't moving.
Items and right-of-way? Questions?
Did I understand correctly that only licensed vehicles are supposed to be parked in the street? So tractors and whatever that sign thing is?
Correct.
Are not street legal?
Right.
Therefore, they should not be parked on the street?
Sarah, we have allowed people to live in their vehicles in Ames. So we have at least one person who's living in a school bus, 365. Do you know, from your perspective, has that number changed? Are there other people that are living in vehicles? Because you had the one, and I wasn't familiar with that one. Are there other vehicles that are residences in Ames?
I haven't seen that one around for a while now, but it did kind of circle in the same neighborhood. I don't think that we see them as often on streets anymore. Maybe parked on private properties more often than just the street. But our concern isn't necessarily the vehicle, it's just, I think people store items in their vehicle, and then when they go into it at night to sleep, those items have to go somewhere. And so we have items sitting around on the curb and in the street that, you know, just aren't safe in the roadway can become projectiles and...
Thanks.
And one other question about that upper right-hand picture. If that were a rental property, would we be able to enforce the cleanup of that heap of things?
So it is a rental property.
Okay, I was going to guess that, but I...
Yeah. Not any differently than owner-occupied. So sometimes we have this with evictions, and the eviction process requires people to have items outside for three days. Those tend to be, look okay the first day, and then once day two and three come and people rummage through them, we end up with stuff on the street, and it's difficult to get it all back and control it. So it's just, I think that one, we actually did, there was so much in the street there, and it's kind of on an intersection, we did have Public Works help us get a skid loader and remove most of the items. But it appeared that that was garbage, not going to be used again, so we made the decision to remove it. I think our concern is more, when those are items of value, what do we do?
So there really is no ordinance that allows the city to go in and clean that up from actually being in the street or actually being on city properties, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we have the ability to say it's not safe and we can remove it. It's our, it's city property, the right-of-way, the street is, and we have an obligation to keep that safe. It's really, how do we deal with the items when we do remove them? That's, I think, more, maybe not a code that we enforce, but more of an internal policy. We hang on to it for so many days, kind of like, we take signs from the right-of-way, right? When people have signs out, we usually do a sweep on Mondays and pick up all the signs that are still out. Some of them are very nice and very expensive, then we'll hang on to them, we'll call them and tell them to come retrieve it. But we don't really have a process for, how long do we hang on to it? Is it our responsibility while we're hanging on to it? Do we need to have it in a secured area? How do we get it there? Who pays for it? All of those things.
I was under the impression that that upper right one falls under the trash ordinance that says that you have to have things confined in a bag or a receptacle of some kind.
Yeah, it's clearly in violation of household materials, garbage not in a hard water type receptacle. But it was more of an immediate danger because it's in the street.
Recreation vehicles, any questions on that? How about vacant and abandoned structures?
I guess, just, maybe this is a general question too. You mentioned acquiring warrants to go onto properties, and you've also highlighted the difficulty when you have an abandoned property where someone has died in serving any kind of citation. Do you have to serve the warrant to somebody, and therefore we'd have the same issue if you got a warrant?
I don't think so. I think we would go, I'd have to have legal speak to it for certain. I think we would go to the court and request the warrant, and if they deem it necessary, they would give it to us, and we can, we can show whomever is there. If the property is occupied, we can show that. But otherwise, I think we can enter without having to serve somebody.
Sarah, on your, in the attachment A in the report, there's a three-year or two-and-a-half-year chart showing, you know, complaints. Looks like right-of-way is like almost a third. Can you kind of describe or explain what you're seeing in terms of right-of-way, what that includes?
Yeah, so those, all of those complaints are low-hanging limbs over sidewalks or streets. So either low-hanging limbs or vegetation encroaching into the sidewalk, or debris on the sidewalk if it's really muddy, or grass clippings, that encompasses all of that. So essentially a clear sidewalk.
So that's not a preponderance of the upper right-hand corner picture, is that correct?
Correct.
And then furniture and garbage, those are, furniture is 12%, garbage is 8% right now. Looks like these are somewhat consistent year over year over year.
Yeah.
Can you, is the furniture, can you explain what furniture and garbage categories mean?
Sure. So furniture is couches, chairs, mostly items sitting on the curb. So I think a lot of people put them on the curb thinking somebody will come and take them, or the garbage hauler will. We try to educate, many of the garbage haulers won't just take the item, you have to call them. So we have to let people know that you might need a call. So that's, that's most of that furniture. It's not often. Every now and then, there's some, there might be a couch by a fire ring that we see, and we let them know that needs to come inside. And then garbage is overfilling of garbage receptacles. So there's also a garbage receptacle one on here, and so I'll explain. Garbage receptacle is the ordinance that prohibits you from keeping your receptacle at the curb for more than 24 hours on a rental property. That is not citywide. Garbage is garbage that's set outside for pickup but not in a container, it's spreading around. Or there's an abundance of items, and we can pinpoint exactly that it's garbage because we can't see household furnishings. But when we see food waste or anything like that, that's garbage, it needs to be in a hard water type receptacle.
Thank you. All right, we'll open up public input and ask people to limit their comments to four to five minutes maximum. And Sarah, if you want to come up, and you may introduce yourself and start. Well, I'm asking that, we have an extensive agenda tonight.
I got it, I got it. All right, I already said, I'm Mike Satterwhite, and why I'm here. I've lived in Ames for 25 years, in that time I have owned and improved 11 houses. I estimate that these efforts have added at least $1.5 million to the city, county, and state tax bases, which is likely worth about $20,000 annually. Currently, I own six homes and pay $32,500 in property tax per year, a number that has increased 20% per year for the last three years. In contrast, with a certain councilman's claim that a state law existed which would limit the hikes to 3%, sure wish I hadn't believed him. In spite of this, I have to squawk and moan and complain to get my street plowed or the storm sewer gutters cleared, which fill after every storm from all the trees which hang over the street, many of which are the city of Ames' responsibility and largely in violation of the height ordinance and frequently wrapped nicely around many electrical wires. At the same time, I routinely see city plows and sweepers clearing already clear streets. I work hard on these properties and I'm quite proud of them. I make these points because I believe this poorly envisioned ordinance is primarily aimed at retaining and improving property values. Clearly, I have a significant stake in what happens with Ames' property values. I would even venture to say that I know at least as much or more about the Ames real estate market as any of you mounted on that perch. The only other reason for this law would be to prevent the transition of a property into a crack house or some kind of abandoned house. But the more likely reason is that the components of the law offend someone's sensibilities about what is considered right and proper about how people in Ames should live. Since this law was enacted, I have been the lucky recipient of five of these public nuisance emails. I think that's about one-half of 1% of the total complaints. Some of these had merit, except that I was actively working on addressing the issues when I received the lovely emails from Cheryl. The last was simply ridiculous and infuriating. I had removed a unique toilet from a property and was intending to sell it. It sat at the corner of my garage for two weeks before I received the email. The only people that really see my house are passersby, many of whom are city employees. Only one neighbor has a really good view. I have many friends in Ames, but not everybody loves me, and I'm probably adding significantly to that number this evening. My properties are in good neighborhoods that are primarily owner-occupied. Most in the neighborhood are perfectly fine with someone renting a home, but there are always some that think that the neighborhood is going to fall off a cliff because there is a rental in the neighborhood. This happens in spite of the fact that I've usually bought a distressed property and immediately go about the business of cleaning it up and getting it in shape to live it, adding to the tax base and improving the values of the property around it. They have this attitude even though Ames has always had a transient professional population that needs and wants a single-family home for the two or three years they're here. Sometimes it is blended family for whom divorce has put homeownership beyond reach for a while. The truth is that I'm offering this community what they need for significantly less than it would take for them to own the home. And yes, I am factoring appreciation of value. I feel fairly certain that some of you up there share this same "no rental properties in my hood" belief. One of the complaints involved a burr oak that had just died the year the complaint was lodged. It was not a tree I was comfortable taking down, but I was working on the problem when I got the email. Removing a large dead tree where the public is walking is absolutely necessary. You will get no argument from me, though it is live limbs after a storm that pose far greater hazard. I actually just missed getting whacked by a large red oak branch while walking my dog. It was hanging after this last storm. The tree that tried to victimize myself and my dog is a city tree. But I want you to imagine a potential scenario that will happen because of the nature of this law and how the city is adjudicating it. Agnes is 83 years old and has lived in her house for Ames for over 50 years. She's a sweet, lovely grandmother. She lives on a fixed income, the bulk of which is her social security check. But her large, mature ash in her front yard has died. A neighbor or even someone driving by, possibly even a tree removal company from out of state, complained. Cheryl writes an email and sends a picture giving her 30 days to solve the problem. Agnes has spent her entire life always trying to do the right thing and avoiding conflict, and certainly not wanting to worry relatives. So Agnes calls Dan's Landscape to request an estimate. They respond and give Agnes an entirely fair estimate with the added provision that they can't get to it for two and a half months. But even more challenging, this is Agnes's worst nightmare. She can't see a way, oh, sorry, hard because power lines in the size of the tree in the house. This is Agnes's worst nightmare. She can't see a way to pay this bill, and she can't comply with commandments of the city of Ames has settled her with. She doesn't want to bother her family, and she feels that Ames as an authority is doing what must be done. She is stressed to the max, she can barely sleep. After four days, she ends up in the hospital for potential heart issues. Let's hope she lives. If this hasn't happened because of this law, it will eventually. Ames is a wonderful town. I certainly believe in it as I have invested heavily in it. I'm driving all around this town most days, and most things I see support that belief. My tenants that have moved in from out of state are besotted with it. Yet I have heard no evidence that the issues being addressed with this law are expanding problems, requiring a legal recourse versus accepting the status quo. I'm confused when Mr. Garten and Mr. Hala think parking a motorhome in my driveway is going to cause a crack house to spring up in the neighborhood. Or maybe the standing water in a bucket or planter that is in the ordinance will bring about the transition. The city is actually better at creating crack houses than I am. Just look at how long the middle school sat vacant and rotting before it was removed. In my neighborhood, the city actually pulled off a con where they got people to donate the quarter million needed to demo the old Edwards Elementary. The money got raised, and it didn't sit as long as the middle school, but what if it hadn't? This is a foolish and poorly conceived ordinance as currently structured, and I see that you are trying to add to it. You don't want me to have trailers that I need to do my work that adds to Ames' tax base. You don't want to see any of the tools and materials required. Technically, even if I'm doing a major construction project, I can't have materials visible to the neighbors even if these materials are in the backyard. God forbid if I own a boat and an RV and a trailer and park them on my property so plows have full access to the street, they are not going to plow. Or if I were a car buff that likes to restore older vehicles, I mostly heat my house with firewood that I collect and split from down trees, all of which is carbon neutral. I estimate I make about $2 an hour for my efforts. And this firewood sits in stacks that might offend certain sensibilities. Based on what you have in this law, you should probably ban that too. Given how the law is currently written and implemented, I could turn in every one of my neighbors, including myself, for something. I'm pretty sure I could come up with a decent list of infractions if I looked at the houses of everyone involved in the city's governance or who worked for the city of Ames, if they actually live here. This law, by its nature, is going to be exercised primarily in older neighborhoods with mature vegetation. However, it can be a wonderful weapon when you need to sort out an elderly homeowner who no longer has the ability to take care of their property the way they once did. There are plenty of things I don't like. I don't like yard signs, whether the signs are political or for a company working on its branding. I don't like big Jesus save posters or garage doors painted with Corinthians quotes. I don't like flea blowers. The noise pollution and laziness encourage me crazy. I don't like piles of trash sitting on the curb. I don't like punk companies parking their work trucks and trailers in the street, especially on hillgrass, or even better, both sides of the road. I don't even like people parking on the street overnight. I don't like mobile home parts, but this is life. It ain't perfect, it ain't always pretty. This is a college town, interesting things happen. It's the beauty and the beast. I could point you to a spot where one of the most valuable properties in town sits directly across the street from two of the least valuable.
Mike, I've given you extreme latitude, you're at seven minutes, would you please draw your question, your comments to close?
I'm very close. Yet I have heard these, this is a, this is a big deal for me. It's a very big deal. And I spent a lot of time on this, and I'm going to finish it, okay? My preferences don't mean that I need an ever-expanding law that turns an entire town into an HOA where I can't have my garbage can sitting outside, because everyone knows you don't create garbage when you're a homeowner. If you want this law to be worth anything, the components that deal purely with the aesthetics need to be removed and complainants need to fill out a form and provide visual evidence for every complaint. Anonymous complaints are unacceptable. Truthfully, as evidenced by your own data, a more consensus-seeking approach will yield, will likely yield almost the same results as an authoritarian one. I'm trying hard to be an upstanding Ames citizens that adds value and fulfills a very necessary role, but all this really makes me want to sell everything and leave. Primarily, this law creates a path for aesthetic vigilantes to exercise their petty impulses. If the objective of this ordinance is to deal with true chronic problem houses, surely there is a list and a definitive number of these owner-occupied houses. So it's logical to ask, after a year and a half of being enacted, you should be able to tell us exactly how many of these houses have been elevated to an acceptable condition. My guess is none. The simple fact is insurance companies are getting very strict about a home's condition and are only going to get more strict. This evolution is likely to do more good than your law. This law primarily generates complaints and anger. Homeowners are under enough stress with the stratospheric increases in property taxes and insurance that have occurred over the last three years. So by all means, jump on the pile. Start trying to pass a law that regulates how many mice I can be in my home while raccoons and foxes and deer, all of which have the potential to spread disease, use the city's infrastructure to propagate their numbers. I recently had a doe jump my fence and trampled my pup, my four-and-a-half-month-old pup, twice.
Mike, please conclude.
I know you folks sitting up there have a thankless job and are not paid enough. And no, I don't want your job. But this law, as currently constructed, is elitist and judgy and unnecessary, not to mention absurdly hypocritical. If you're looking for a defensible legal path to demo property, this is not the way to do it. A woman or a man's home is their castle. Ames, as a city, should be extremely limited in its ability to tell me what to do with it. A good deal of unnecessary angst and anger is being generated by it. Get rid of it and figure out how to execute a justifiable goal. On a final note, Cheryl is a lovely person who is just doing her job. Admittedly, not a job I think she should be doing. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we'll close public input. All right, staff has posed 12 items, issues that they're interested to know of. All right, staff has posed 12 items, issues that are interested to know if council is interested in pursuing, evaluating, bringing onto a future agenda. And I'm just going to read them, the numbers. If I don't hear anything quickly on the number, we'll move on, and then we'll seek to get this down to what, if any, council wants to take up at a future agenda. So, number one, regarding vermin.
I would move that we, is it place on a future agenda, Mayor? Is that what you're looking for?
Yep.
I move that we place on a future agenda, proposed ordinance for prohibiting conditions which harbor vermin.
Sir, second?
Can I get clarity first? Are you talking about the habitat or are you talking about the infestation or both?
Well, I mean, if there's interest by council, I'm certainly open to discussing both the presence of vermin, but the City of Ames is out of touch with respect to the issue of conditions which harbor vermin. These critters don't respect boundaries and impact the whole neighborhood, so I'm open to having, amending my motion so that it would address both the conditions which harbor vermin and the presence of vermin to give council a chance to look at both options. If there's a second.
Sir, second?
I'll second it for discussion. And then my discussion point is that I believe Sarah said that it's easier to prove vermin infestation and that theoretically this is more damaging to structural integrity than the habitat issue, which is, is very important to many people, but it's a different concern. And so I would be interested in discussing the infestation component of this, but not the habitat component.
I mean, respectfully, these are both subjects that I think warrant additional public input and council deliberation, and I think we could talk about, with the capacity to do both.
Sarah, is there anything in the rental code equivalent to this one?
There's not, no. The only reference in the code for vermin is that junked vehicles cannot harbor vermin. You can't have a vehicle that's full of critters.
All right, those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Anita, could you? Motion failed.
So I would try again with a narrower motion, which is that we have a discussion about how we would define and implement an ordinance that includes vermin-infestation.
Second.
All right. Those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Number two, any interest in outdoor storage?
I would move that we place on a future agenda, a, an item to help us to address the presence of outdoor storage items.
Sir, second?
So, council, we're going to leave these neighborhoods as junkyards? I mean, I just, I want the community to see that's what we're doing tonight.
I don't think that having it in the ordinance previously was effective either. So I don't think there's any proof that either way is going to fix this particular problem. And I don't know what it would take to fix it.
Is this the sort of thing where in the rental code there's an equivalent provision or is it just typically like in leases that people can't store things outside?
It's about the same language in the rental code, household items and appliances.
Are prohibited.
Correct.
But it's, that does not extend to private owner residences, correct?
Correct.
No, that, no, it does.
You have an ordinance.
Yeah. Yep. So currently, no property in town can have any household items, couches, mattresses, tables, lamps, or appliances outside.
We already prohibit anything that's used indoors for people stored outside.
Yep. It's the other thing. Yep, all right. Item three, restricting overgrowth vegetation.
Counsel, I would move that we place this on a future agenda to bring consistency between the 12-inch limitation for turf grass and the 12 inches for weeds.
Sir, second?
And I would just offer in support of my motion, in 2023, there were 2.51% of our complaints were based on this. And then, once we put this in place, that jumped to 14.76% and then 2024, 11.7% 2025. So if we're looking to do an experiment to see how this works in the community, we've had our experiment, and we have had a significant spike. The community doesn't like this. And if people want to have weeds, they should keep them at a height of 12 inches. And if you've driven around the community, there are a number of properties that are a huge impact to their neighbors, and this is an opportunity for us to bring consistency for our staff's enforcement efforts.
Sir, second for the motion?
I'll second.
Those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion failed. Item four, length of time of vehicles being parked on private property without moving? Any interest in that? Item five, criteria for defining a junk vehicle.
I, I'm not sure about this because I think the only thing that seems like it would be helpful would be to have a warrant so that you could look under the hood to determine what's a junk vehicle. And I, I just don't know what that entails or how, how involved that process is getting such a warrant. So I'm hesitant to move that we go in that direction. I would, I guess I would say that I, do you know where the two wheels or more missing component of a junk wheel came from? Because it seems to me if you're missing one wheel, that's an inoperable vehicle. So, you know, at the very least, I would move we change that component of the definition of junk vehicle.
Is there an, do you want to make it into a motion?
Oh, I would, I would move that we change the...
Was it just more looking, having a broader discussion or is it just strictly limited just to?
I, well, unless staff wants to go into greater depth about what these warrants entail and how much effort it takes and, and, I mean, it seems like a somewhat arduous process to acquire one, and I don't want to move that we go in that direction without knowing what that entails.
So the question was, does council want to revise any criteria for defining a junk vehicle? Is that acceptable or is it too broad?
So we already have the ability to seek the warrant. That's not something we're asking permission to do. I suppose it would be helpful maybe to know, how far do you want staff to go before doing that? Do we really want to get a warrant to prove that somebody's missing a major component of a vehicle? Or do we want to step back and look from the public way and say it's missing, as you're saying, one tire or more, and that constitutes the junk vehicle? How far, how far do we go to prove that it's junked? I think is what we need direction on.
Sarah, I didn't note on this one, so is your opinion that our current criteria are consistent with best practices in this area?
Yep, they're very consistent. It was adopted, I think this was verbatim from Iowa Falls. It's also very consistent with the parking ordinance that I believe after a vehicle's parked on a street for 24 hours, if it's missing two or more tires, it can be towed immediately. So that language is very consistent, and same with registration.
And for rental code as well?
Same.
Yeah.
So, looking at the junked vehicle code sections, the introduction to the list of items says constitutes a threat to the public health, welfare, and/or safety, but then there's, it's like it's an option D, that maybe this thing, the condition constitutes a threat to the public health or safety. So I'm not, I'm confused about that because it seems that a bunch of our junk, so-called junked vehicles, aren't necessarily posing a threat or, depending how you define welfare, maybe. But most of the complaints seem to not be focused on public health or safety. Is that accurate?
I would say that's quite accurate. Most of the complaints, I don't think any of the A through E sections really are what people are complaining about. It's usually just that this vehicle's parked here and never moves. It must not work.
Then I don't know, I don't know how we make this better, other than I would move that we change the definition to one or more tires missing.
Sir, second?
Which is in A.
All right, motion dies from lack of second. Go ahead, Anita.
I'll second.
Okay. Those who favor the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion failed. All right, item six, prohibiting items from being placed in a driveway and establish a rule process.
Move we place this on a future agenda?
Sir, second? Counsel, I am interested in understanding the picture that was shown that Sarah illustrated the upper right-hand corner. If they have no ability to remove that, that is acceptable?
Well, it's already against the trash ordinance.
Well, I understood that you had, so you can go, so if that happens?
So the concern is that it's on the street and it poses a threat to the safety of vehicles.
But it's in the driveway, though. The point is if it wasn't on the street.
If it was, if that was all confined to the curb, we would open a case for outdoor furniture and garbage, and we would work with the owner to have it removed. So it's really, really these instances, like, so for example, we have, especially right now in town, you might drive by neighborhoods and see pods on the street, the moving pod. People should get a temporary obstruction permit for that. That's not well-known, but when we see a pod, we don't know whose it is. We could knock on every door in the neighborhood and try to figure it out. It's not registered. It doesn't have a license plate where we can look it up. So it's very hard to work with the person on getting it into compliance, putting it in a different spot or getting a TOP to allow it to be there. So really, these items that are placed there are not supposed to be in the street. We just don't really have a mechanism to address them when we, we don't know where they came from. So if we determine that we need to remove it for safety purposes, our concern now is, how do we remove it? Where does it go? How long do we store it? What's that process?
And I appreciate, Rachel, your point about garbage, but this is something different. And so I, I think we should give the staff a chance to bring this. We don't have to approve it, but I think we should at least have a conversation. The staff feel like they need these tools.
Did we have a second? Okay. Just checking that we needed a second to discuss it.
So have you already, if we move forward with something like this, have you already thought of ways that we would be able to identify who owns a particular item?
Not really, not, not other than, like, I think the sign advertises somebody with a phone number, so that one's easy. Otherwise, it's difficult, and I think that's why we're concerned is the tractor, for example, we may have to remove that and wait for somebody to call us and report it stolen so we can figure out whose it actually is. We don't have a way to identify an owner. We would knock on doors and try to figure something out, but if we can't, what do we do? So really, this is just having council say, yes, look into some sort of policy that we could enforce citywide and be consistent with how we handle these items.
I'm okay discussing this, but yeah, I think we need to think through how we would enforce on any of these. I don't want it to be a logistical nightmare for us to have to store a lot of things that are taken out. And I think the point about pods is really well noted, how are college students supposed to know that they would have to get a temporary obstruction permit to do these sorts of things when they might not have a place to put it on the property anyways? So, yeah, I'm open to talking about it more, but I think these are all concerns that we'll need to address if we want to make a policy around it.
Everyone understand the motion? Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number seven, exception for RVs to be parked in a driveway for more than 72 hours from April to October.
Move we add this to a future agenda?
Second.
All right. Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Exploring establishment of a grant or a loan program to help with abatements so owners have an option other than a citation. Is there interest in discussing that?
I'd move we put this on an agenda.
Second.
Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine, level of compliance, okay, what level of compliance? Is council wanting to have staff achieve through abatement? Is there a monetary threshold? Is there interest in talking about that on future agenda?
Yeah, I'd move we put this on a future agenda.
Second.
Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Ten, should staff continue to enforce reactively or would council like to implement proactive enforcement? Interest in talking about that?
I'd move we put that on an agenda.
Do, do we need to put it on an agenda if we just want to continue status quo?
Well, I think that the point, I think the question, the topic discussed is, do you want to consider implementing a proactive enforcement? Right? That's, that's, that's the question you're being opposing, right? And that was your intent of your motion? That right, to discuss it?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Could you clarify, Sarah? By proactive enforcement, does that mean that this, that we would have city staff inspecting all properties? Or I can also see this meaning that if the city staff sees a property that's out of compliance, we don't have to wait for an official complaint to be raised, but the city staff would have the ability to begin reaching out to that property owner? Am I, am I correct on that reading of that?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. Eleven, should there be restrictions on filing anonymous complaints? Is there interest in discussing that?
Yes, I move we put this on a future agenda.
Second.
Those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. And last one is, do you want to add language to the code that would regulate vacant and abandoned structures?
I would move we put that on a future agenda.
Second.
All right, those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, anything else that you would be helpful tonight, Sarah, or Chief, to hear from council?
I have one question, two-part question. Mike mentioned, do we know how many properties have actually been improved through our actions? And I think that's a good question. Are we making headway on some problem properties especially? Or, you know, is this really a lot of the effort for no good reason?
I think that's hard to answer because improved is, you know, up to the neighbor. There's a lot of properties that we have got, we have a very high compliance rate. So we have a lot of properties that are compliant. So if council sees that the, the ordinances are an improvement to the neighborhoods, then I would say, yes, it's improving. If there's components of it that are not being addressed, you might not think it's approving, right? So it really, it really depends. I would say, you know, as we talk about taxable value, a lot of people say that problem properties bring down the tax value. I don't see, you know, we have several properties in town that are problem properties. We're at regularly for lots of different reasons, not one specific code, code thing. And I will say that this ordinance isn't going to resolve those, probably. Those problem properties are something we'll have to use 657A or something else to address because we can keep mowing the lawn on something, but it really doesn't address the issue. So I can't really speak to if it's improved. I would just say that we've, a lot of it is education, so that, you know, the high number for... So that, you know, the high number for right-of-way, low trees. We want people to be able to walk the sidewalks and, and navigate all of that. So we see every, every contact we have is education. Just people don't know the, the height limitations. And so that's a lot of what we're doing is trying to teach them what the ordinances are and what's, what's required.
And second component, are we collecting mapping data for where these complaints are occurring? So we can determine whether there are areas of town that are more susceptible to complaints or that are a particular type of complaint versus another?
Um, I have not divided it out by area. We can certainly map that. That would be easy. I have divided it by rental, rental and owner occupied. So I have that information if you're interested in seeing that next time. I would say that it's right at half and half. Half the properties we get complaints about are rentals and half are owner occupied.
Right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to item 31, property owner requests initiate zoning tax amendment to the hospital medical design district. Amelia.
Good evening. As my maps are loading. So this is a request from Mary Greeley to make two amendments to our hospital medical design district. I have a map of the whole district for reference. So it goes from 10th to 13th Street, north to south. And Kellogg over to Carroll, east to west. The amendments have to do with a specific new development that involves two buildings at the southwest corner of the site. So that's what's, that's what's driving the requests, but it would apply district-wide. So just so you have a sense of where that is. So again, the two requested changes relate to two proposed buildings. Sorry, I'll skip to the site plan. So we have one building that's actually for town home style apartments. That's going to have frontage directly on Kellogg. And then one building that's a nurse training facility. And so for the apartment, townhomes, the request at change is to just allow household living in, in the hospital district as a principal permanent use. It's not currently allowed and so to facilitate these townhomes, we have to allow it. The second request is, is a little bit more complex and it has to do with the setbacks of the medical training facility. So that building is proposed to be 60 feet in height. Currently, when you have a building that's 50 feet or less in height, we have, we have a 12-foot setback. But when you exceed that 50-foot height, so going up to 60, like the proposed building is, there's an additional setback that applies when you're adjacent to a residential zoning district. So this directly to the south has residential medium density zoning. And so there's an additional buffer or, or setback added on when you exceed 50 feet in height. With that additional buffer, the required setback is 50 feet for that building from the south property line. The request at setback that you received from Mary, Mary Greeley is, is 12 feet, which would be that of a 50-foot building. But again, we have a taller building here that requires an additional buffer from residential areas. So that's the nature of that request. I, I will note on that request, staff did go through the zoning ordinance, looked at other similarly, similar zones that had other buildings that might exceed, you know, four stories and found that typically 20-feet setback was required for, you know, a taller structure, four stories or more. And one that was a budding residential zoning, like in highway-oriented commercial, for instance. Any time you're budding a residential zone, there's a 20-foot setback required. So just as a point of comparison. And, and as some background on why we have that additional setback requirement, it was actually adopted in 2011 when there was some proposed expansions at the hospital. They wanted to overall increase the height in the hospital medical district to allow those expansions. And so as a, a point of balance adjacent to residential zoning, the height was actually kept the same, but an additional buffer was created. So we could intensify internal the site, but maintain compatibility on the external edges of a property. And so I think, you know, knowing that and knowing how, you know, the hospital medical district was designed to allow these medical uses, you know, in the center of our community, but compatible with this historic neighborhood. We do feel it's important to note that some of the, the changes are kind of a departure from the historical development pattern. And so when we're considering the options tonight, it's important to know council's interest in, in that compatibility issue and how to maintain compatibility. Some issues, there was a neighborhood meeting on July 7th that were raised regarding compatibility, include the design of the townhome structures, the setbacks, the overall height of the training facility and, and how broadly the changes would apply to the district as a whole. I did want to note in the letter, Mary Greeley did say that they are willing to consider architectural design requirements similar to the single-family conservation overlay that's also adjacent in this neighborhood to kind of help blend that in. And in, in those options, staff has presented. There are a few other options to kind of limit how it would apply through these, allow initiating these amendments, but instead of having them be allowed by right, going through a major site development plan process that would give council discretion to look at the designs and determine what's appropriate. This would also have a public hearing, so you could get feedback from the neighborhoods. And I, I believe Mary Greeley representatives are here this evening. If you have any questions for them and they can comment anymore on their interests and, and the options and, and their proposal, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Just for clarification, Amelia, thanks for this. So the setback, could you show on the map the, the location of where the setback in question is?
Yes. So you see this dark edge here where my cursor is very light? The setback is, this is the setback in question. So right now, it's about 12 feet from this, this wall of the structure to that, that south property line. And I think that's the setback that's shown on this site plan. That's what's being requested. Whereas a 50-foot setback would be, would be typically, typically required for a building of this height, which would put us, you know, more at the middle of, of the site.
Okay. Thanks.
And Amelia, if, can you go back to the, the hospital medical map that you had? So if we were to make adjustments to the setback for this training facility, that would apply to this entire hospital medical zone and the one out on 13th as well?
Um, I believe this is the only hospital medical zoning district in the city. I, I don't, I want to double-check that.
I thought it was still.
I'm pretty sure it's. I'm pretty sure it's.
That's okay.
Industrial.
It's not, right now, there's not single-family residential.
Yes, yes. But here, yes, it would apply district-wide. And I think in particular, looking at this, it's staff. I think east of Duff, there are several residential properties that would be directly adjacent where that would have, have an impact.
And I, having sat through many council meetings back in 2011, I recall the somewhat contentious discussions that occurred between Mary Greeley and the neighborhoods and how they worked through all of those to arrive at what we see now. And part of that was this limiting of, of height for some of the buildings and making it more compatible with the residential area around it. So I just want to make sure that, that for those of you who weren't watching city council meetings back in 2011, that you have that context. Because whatever we do on this site with that height impacts this entire parcel of, or this zone.
Yes, I, I'll just add, again, staff presented an option where approval was through a major site development plan option to kind of help with compatibility and those concerns. You could also entertain an option where, you know, these changes only apply to properties that have hospitals as the principal use already. So you could further limit it by streets even, if that was a concern.
And is that what we are being asked to do with the text amendment?
The Mary, the, so Mary Greeley's text amendment was, was district-wide, but we have had further conversations with them about what that, what that actually means. It's not just limited to their property. So I think if, if you wanted to ask questions with their representatives, if they'd be open to those changes, that would be a good conversation to have.
And looking at this map again, those RM parcels just south of the development site, those currently have houses on them?
They do, yes.
So the 60-foot tall building would be 12 feet away from the parcels with the single fam, or are they single-family? I don't know.
They are single-family. Let me try to zoom in here. So this western dwelling fronts on Kellogg and it has approximately a 20-foot setback on its lot line from Kel, um, from the Mary Greeley property line. So you'd be looking at about 32 feet there. Because of how far back the training facility is set back on the site, it'll have approximately 12 feet of, of overlap between the two buildings. But then the parcel to the east of it will have its full property line overlapped with that, that training facility building. And I believe though that one, because it fronts on 10th instead of Kellogg, does have a 50-foot setback from that shared north property line. So it's setback a little bit more, but yes, the, the full property line will be shared with that 60-foot tall building.
Other questions? All right. No, Gary, you're president. Did you want to address, do you wish to address council or your, and your representatives? Is the applicant?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Gary Boteen, chief financial officer at Mary Greeley. I'm just here to answer any questions any of you have to what the staff just depicted. We would be open to discussions around just addressing the text amendment to this particular parcel. We're not looking to add it to everything else in the hospital medical zone. But yeah, I'm willing to entertain any other questions you have.
Questions for Gary?
Gary, could you give, give us a little sense of how this property is going to be used? Because clearly, if you designed the building at 50 feet, then we, you would have the eligibility for the 12-foot setback. So.
Correct.
There must have been some thought that there was value in having that additional story. Could you speak to the council about that decision?
Sure. And I think it was already, Gloria's already alluded to it. There was discussion prior to my time at Mary Greeley, back in 2011, between the city, the neighborhood and Mary Greeley about, you know, we're, we are kind of in a landlocked area and density should be our friend and not our enemy. And so when we looked at this, we said, well, we don't have very many opportunities to utilize a space like we have now, so we should look at going up. And I will tell you, in the year, almost the year that we have been in discussions with tenfold architecture and others, multiple additional uses have become identified. We are now, and I just was talking to our tenfold folks tonight before the meeting started, we are now looking at potentially making medical office building space on the first floor and moving the simulation lab and training space up because we have some opportunities to bring some addition, some additional physician partners into the community through a couple of other entities that we're talking to. So very quickly, I think, instead of having, we were originally thinking we might have some shell space that we would put on the upper levels. And now we're moving things up to where, you know, we, we could pretty quickly be filling it from the beginning.
And, and so much of what we have to do appears is balancing.
Sure.
So, uh, well, maybe we'll have some people from the neighborhood speak tonight about their, what's important, their values for the neighborhood. But as we think about the value of this to Mary Greeley and to healthcare, help us understand what's on the other side of the equation. Because while I appreciate that we did something in 2011, boy, our community has sure changed a lot since then. And we wouldn't want to be shackled into something that was done then. We want to be able to put a fresh set of eyes on this. Because could you speak to the, the, the needs of Mary Greeley and the, and the community?
Yeah, so I think it's not surprised anyone that there's a nursing shortage everywhere. It really brought, it was brought to light during the pandemic. It has continued. We have the issue of people leaving the workforce because it's hard work, mental health and, you know, patients lashing out at staff. People are deciding, I don't want to work in this environment. Couple that with the aging baby boomers who are leaving the workforce. And in 2023, the state of Iowa had 1,300 nurse applications turned away because there wasn't educational room for them to get educated. Okay? This program with Iowa State that we're proposing, or that Iowa State's proposing, only adds 96 B S N students a year. The University of Iowa has a master's program that only has, adds 40. So between the two of them, it's only a dent in the state shortage. And we're trying to do something that not only benefits us, but benefits surrounding hospitals. We can't sit here, just, Brian Deere likes to say, because we met with some staffers from Randy Feenster's office a week ago, we need the hospitals in Des Moines to succeed. Our outlying hospitals need us to succeed because it's getting harder and harder and the system is getting backed up more and more for patient throughput. And so we need the staff. It doesn't help us to close beds, whether it's financially driven or whatever, because that doesn't help the overall healthcare system.
And that's really helpful. You could build this facility in other parts of the community and people just sort of commute back and forth between Mary Greeley and the facility. So as we think about the value from a proximity perspective, what's the delta there? What, what does that proximity give you that having it in another part of town wouldn't have, give?
Yeah, it probably means more to Mary Greeley than it does Iowa State, right? Because their students are going to be coming from campus to this facility. They could go anywhere in the community. But from our, our staff's needs perspective, and we've mapped out the programming, our nursing students, usually they're in orientation or whatever, fairly new nurses, they're not, they're not going to be in training eight hours a day. They're coming from a two, for a two-hour session. And so to be on campus where they can leave their shift, come for two hours, do a skills training, go home, is a lot more efficient for them and a lot more effective for us to be able to maintain patient care.
And how about the piece with the townhomes for that?
Yeah, so the townhomes, McFarland Clinic, you know, is, is investing inside town. And Andrew Perry made it clear in our first community meeting back in February that McFarland intends to recruit and hire 30 additional physicians in the next five years. Oftentimes, and I just, we just had an onboarding with a new pulmonologist last week. And we were talking to him about he and his wife looking at housing. They're going to temporarily, to start, they're, they're choosing Ankeny because they couldn't find what they wanted here. And they know if they want to build, they're going to have to wait. And so we said, huh, if we just had these townhouses, they could live right there. And for the 12 to 18 months until they get something else that they wanted. So that's part of what we're looking at, is having housing available for those transitioning physicians that are moving to our community.
And how about that site in particular for why it's important to housing? I think I've heard that from some people in the neighborhood, that the housing could be built somewhere else, whereas the nursing building couldn't.
Good point, Rachel. We looked at that as more of a, a community offering to be a buffer to the residential neighbors to the west of us. Because let's face it, some of the neighbors might say, well, Mary Greeley's just building another big building like you did your West Tower, and now we have to look at that. And we've gotten responses from our immediate neighbors to the west that say, I love that idea. I love that idea. We know we're also interested. We know we're also interested in adding to the historical district with walkability, housing that's located close to downtown. We had a cardiologist several years ago that rented downtown so he could walk to work. This would have been a prime opportunity for him.
And Gary, I'll add to that. I appreciate Rachel's question. So are there things that you learned from the discussions with the neighborhood that you can point to and say, we're doing some things differently in the project because of what we feedback on?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the suggestions, there were three, I think in the notes that you had in your packet, there were three key takeaways. One was, okay, well, couldn't, we have three houses there today that are not currently being used, two of which might have some future purpose. So we are going to go through a process to make those available for somebody, if they want to move them. We'll offer them for a dollar to say, if you want to move this home to another location, have at it. The second one was related to the row houses and the facades and the design features and so on. And we will take that back with our architecture firm. And we'll continue to make modifications to try to fit as much of the overlay district design features as are required. And now I'm blanking on the third item. Oh, the third item was with regards to this text amendment. Does it have to apply to the entire hospital medical zone? And I've already spoken to that, that we'd be willing to consider that.
Thanks.
So I'm not clear, and maybe Amelia, you can explain this, that this idea of not having it apply to the entire zone, how would that work? Is that just like a gentleman's agreement that it won't? Or is there a mechanism for us to do that?
Yeah, so when you initiate tonight, you'd give us direction to, you know, allow the amendments to be applied for. And the other part of the direction would be to, for instance, limit them only to properties that have hospitals as a principal use or, you know, limit them only to a certain area by Kellogg or something along those lines. So you could initiate an amendment that limited the area they applied to. I think the hospital as a principal use would be probably the cleanest way to do it.
So Gary, one other question.
Sure.
If you didn't have the townhomes there, how tall would the building have to be for the training?
Well, yeah, and we've talked about that internally. So we could probably go to three levels and then widen it and push it out towards Kellogg is probably what we would do.
And I recognize that if you remove that housing from that site, then you're probably looking for other properties in the vicinity where you might want to construct something. And we do have a few properties in the vicinity. But then, of course, we have the hospital expanding beyond the footprint of that current district. How have the owners to the south, immediately to the south of this, reacted?
The two of them were both at our community meeting on July 7th. Mr. Wall, his only comment to us prior to that meeting, and he didn't speak up at the meeting, he just said, you need to know that that property is wet, which we know, and we've had the soil borings done. And I think he was concerned that, you know, we would do something that would somehow drain water to his property, which we wouldn't. And then the only other comment from the other young man that faces 10th Street was just the concern about the height.
So I assume that that owner said it's too tall and too close?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
All right, so you'll be able to speak to yourself.
Well, a lot of people give public input after this, yeah.
Because, I mean, when I look at this, I think, man, the hospital bought residential, and it was zoned residential. And then the council changed the zoning to hospital medical. And now we're in the position where we're being asked to change it back to residential when we've got residential all around the facility. And, you know, removing the residential could result in a shorter building that wouldn't dominate everything else. So those are the things that are going through my mind.
Sure.
I haven't decided where I stand exactly, but I'm really hung up on, you know, the what-if. If you didn't have those townhomes there, would you have to have the six-story building? And therefore, if it's shorter, maybe it's more compatible or less imposing?
Sure. Other questions?
Yeah, so I guess the 20-foot setback that's in other zones that are but residential, I think, is kind of interesting. Would that be a compromise that Mary Greeley would be able to adjust kind of the property to hit the 20-foot setback? Or is it anything greater than 12 is not going to be workable?
I would have to ask our architectural experts in the room. I know we've looked at that. I think with the space needs for the simulation labs, the anatomy labs, the skills lab, the storage for the equipment, mannequins and so on, we've shoehorned this in to where it is. The only other option would be if those property owners would want to sell us that additional setback, which I haven't talked to them about that either.
Other questions?
If, you've now said that maybe you're considering office space in this building. If you said, you know, we've got other places we can put offices, let's lower this building to the 50-foot level. It seems like that at least would be more in line with what we see in the other zoning districts and RM, which is those two houses next door. Has that discussion occurred at all?
We've been having some discussion. You know, we have plans, we have some existing clinically-designed spaces in the, what we call the South Tower of the hospital, that we have plans to build out clinical space. So essentially, all of that existing space would be consumed. You know, we have the IT building that's jointly owned between, well, it's owned by Clinic Building Company, I believe, not us. We still inhabit that, and McFarland Clinic habits two-thirds of it with business office and so on. So we don't have a lot of other existing space that we can just put clinic offices in right now, which is why when some of these opportunities have arisen in the last few weeks, we said, oh, well, what if we pushed everything else up and put that on the main floor?
Gary, does the hospital have a long-range master plan in terms of what they're, where you're headed in terms of? I mean, I think, well, I've heard from residents, they're not against the hospital. I mean, I think we all are proud of what the medical, you know, care we get in the community. I'm just curious, what's the long-term vision? Where are you going next? And I think one of the concerns was, is that why gobble up space that's already designated for hospital and then using it for residential when maybe you could use that space for additional medical purposes? What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, and that question came up in the community meeting, and I gave an example. We don't have a 20- or 30-year plan, and partly, it changes so rapidly. We have a five-to-10-year plan, and even that even changes. So when we built this West Tower, and Gloria refers to 2011, we opened it and moved in in 2014. We had a 39-bed surgical unit for inpatient surgeries. Within two years, we reduced the size of that by nine beds. Why? Technology had improved, and total nips and heat, total hips and knees are now mostly outpatient surgery. So the need for inpatient beds, we believe, is going to continue to reduce over time. Now, for us, we get a lot of referrals from surrounding hospitals. So in the near future, we don't anticipate, you know, shrinking our inpatient size. Most everything is moving to more of an outpatient setting, which is why the Surgery Center was built in partnership with McFarland Clinic. We're moving 60% of our surgical volume to that facility over the next year. And so what does that mean? Well, that means we have OR space available, we have outpatient surgery space, endoscopy suites and so on. We're getting calls from physicians in Des Moines who can't get block time at ORs in Des Moines wanting to get on our medical staff and bring cases here. We're open to that. We want to fill those rooms. That's not inpatient, but it's still good volume for us to have.
So do you anticipate, I mean, in your five- or 10-year look ahead, needing additional land in this area? Or working some kind of a deal with McFarland or some of the clinics across the street from Duff to start expanding there? What thoughts do you have on that?
No, I think, you know, for example, our Family Medicine East building, which McFarland leases all of that space today, they intend to move all those physicians to Cytown. We have two other entities interested in leasing that space from us once it's freed up.
So this is east of Duff?
Yeah, it's east of the Med Arts Building, southeast, or yeah, southeast intersection corner from the hospital. And we also have an internal need for outpatient behavioral health to grow. We have that in the hospital currently, and we're out of space. And so we're doing some analysis right now to look at expanding outpatient behavioral health services and possibly using that building ourselves for that, which we know is a dire need everywhere.
And did you, there's been some conversation about, you know, why residential, we can understand why it's nice to be adjacent to the hospital. Was there any consideration given to a different location in this general area?
Well, I know there's a lot to the south of us that Harold Pike owns, for example. We've had conversation over the years. It hasn't really progressed to a point where that would be something, we can still entertain that, I'm sure, to look at.
Well, I just didn't, I'm not going to try and design anything from the day. Yes, it's just trying to think, is there other opportunity for you to preserve some land to add on to this building, so to speak, or reconfigure, is what he was talking about? Okay. All right, any other questions for Gary? Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
All right, welcome up, public comment. If you wish to address council on this topic, you're welcome to do so. If you could try and limit your comments to three to four minutes. And please come and deus introduce yourself, and you may begin. Kate, going to start us off?
Hi, good evening. Kate Gregory, 803 Kellogg. First, I just want to commend Amelia for her summation of the whole project and the council for the background reading that it appears you really did. And also to Mr. Botin for his presentation. I think that gave a great sense of what this project is. I'll try to keep my comments brief. I think some of the greatest concerns that I heard at the public meeting, where there are about, neighborhood meeting, about 30 people from the neighborhood there, was that the height with only the 12-foot setback is a real concern, especially if the text amendment isn't limited to just the property in question. So I think the discussion about trying to limit it just to that one corner of the property, if you choose to go forward, rather than throughout the entire medical district, is a real big need for the community. There's a lot of fear about what would happen on the east side of Duff if you didn't limit it in that way. I also think parking is a big issue, which hasn't come up tonight. But there are going to be more people working in the training building and the nurses. And the housing currently doesn't require any onsite parking, which is unique because almost all other residential property requirements at Ames require parking to be on the residential parking property, and this does not. And if you drive down Kellogg or on 10th on a weekday, that parking is very congested because people who work and use Mary Greeley really park all over that area. So I think parking is a concern for many residents in that area. I also think that the idea that land that was converted from residential into medical use would be converted back into residential is very concerning for some of the residents. We had people at the neighborhood meeting that talked about Mary Greeley taking their houses in previous decades. And they were pretty disappointed, I guess, that now Mary Greeley would say, oh, that wasn't necessary. We're going to turn it back into residential land. I have worked in infrastructure for 40 years. I've worked in organizations that had medical hospitals all over the world, many in residential communities. And all of those properties had master plans. They were required to have master plans for land use, exactly because of what Mr. Botin said. Technology changes quickly, and you want to have some thought given ahead of time to different types of space you might need to meet the needs of the future. I don't think it's appropriate to frame this as Mary Greeley versus the community. I don't think it's that way. As was said, the community really supports Mary Greeley and wants Mary Greeley to thrive. But there are some compromises that could be made. Compromises like making the building smaller and moving the residential to another place in the community. There are empty lots, and there are vacant former social service provider properties that could be used. Right now, they're not. And so I know the council believes in infill. This would be a great way to utilize those properties, get them back into use, and meet the needs of the local community with a smaller building. You could also take some of the unused space. Mary Greeley has two unused floors in the South Tower. And they've also just talked about leasing some space that's going to be made available in the future to other providers. They could use that space themselves. So I think we could do some give and take, but I don't think it's the community versus Mary Greeley. I think it's how we can work together to find a win-win solution. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kate.
Hello, my name is Eric Wustemann. My wife and I live at 209 10th Street with our two daughters. So in the map that we saw, we are the east house of those two houses. Our property is directly south of the proposed nursing simulation and medical training facility. The Mary Greeley parking garage is currently our neighbor to the east, separated by an alley and a large setback. I am here to comment against Mary Greeley's request to reduce the setback if a building is exceeding 50 feet because my family would be negatively impacted by allowing this. Let me start by saying that I am happy that Ames has a high-quality hospital like Mary Greeley to service our residents and residents of the surrounding counties. Everyone in my family has been a patient at Mary Greeley or McFarland Clinic. I fully agree with Mary Greeley's goal to build a nurse-training facility. The nursing shortage is a nationwide problem. My mother has been a neonatal nurse my entire life and retired this year after 46 years at Blank Children's Hospital in Des Moines. My mother-in-law retired a few years ago after nursing at Mary Greeley for over a decade. I have heard from both of them about the challenges that hospitals are facing in finding the nurses necessary to treat patients. My wife and I have owned our home since 2013. When we bought our house, it was in rough shape. It had been used as a rental for many years and was not well-maintained. We have spent thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours of our time to improve our home to be a place where we can raise our family. We are proud of the work that we have done and have heard from neighbors that we took an ISO and turned it into another example of the charm of the Old Town neighborhood. We are also happy with the monetary investment in our home. Valuations on websites like Zillow and Realtor.com, as well as the assessment conducted by Ames and Story County last year, show that our home value has increased with the money and time we have put into it. I support Mary Greeley in building the nurse-training facility, but not with the reduced setback that they have requested. A 60-foot building only 12 feet from our property line would reduce the comfort of our home and our backyard, and I believe it would reduce the value of our home. I ask that the Ames City Council reject Mary Greeley's request for the reduced setback. I support option number six of the city staff report on this matter, which would not initiate any amendments at this time. Thankfully, Mary Greeley will still be able to build the nurse-training facility to address the nursing shortage, as long as they do not build the proposed townhomes. There is more than enough space in the proposed construction area for the nurse-training facility to be built in a way that does not require any zoning changes. I do not believe that the townhomes that Mary Greeley has proposed buildings are necessary for Mary Greeley's mission and therefore do not reach the threshold necessary for the city council to provide Mary Greeley with special zoning. My wife and I are Ames residents. We are not members of the Mary Greeley Board of Trustees. Therefore, we cannot control what Mary Greeley decides to do. We should, however, be able to count on our city council to protect our interests and the interests of other residents in our neighborhood. That is the purpose of the zoning laws that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Anybody else? All right, closed public comment. Follow-up questions?
Amelia, if the townhomes weren't built, what would the current zoning allow for the training facility as far as height and setback?
So I think if it were three stories and less than 50 feet, you know, the training facility is considered an allowed use, so that we didn't need any changes to allow the use. And if it could be reduced in size because it was expanded in surface area and meet that 12-foot setback?
So what if they were to do at 50 feet? Same applies, as long as they don't go over 50 feet?
At 50 feet, it would be, yes, a 12-foot setback from the south property line.
Gary, can I ask you another question?
Yes.
Oh, Gary, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said Amelia.
I understand it's nice to have buffers around buildings, you know, grass. Was there any consideration given to moving the building north? Because you have a grass buffer and you have sidewalk there, the new building.
You mean north on that existing lot?
Yep.
There is some infrastructure, if you look at...
We'll go to the site plan first.
Yeah.
Go to the colored one that's got, I like colors. The next, I think it's the, one before that, Amelia. There you go, I was just zooming on that. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, so I, I believe, and I might ask tenfold to respond to this, but I believe we have some restrictions as to how far north we can move. We have some underground infrastructure there related to the hospital operations that we can't impede on. And maintaining the drive there along the north side of that.
No, yeah, without, I was just wondering if trying to get more, trying to find a happy medium here. If you can move the building north to give more buffer between, and maybe you can't quite get 50 feet. But if you can move it farther north, I know it's nice to have grass, and it's nice to have sidewalk. I was just curious if consideration was given to that without compromising your driveway and your other, other things? Was that, was that looked at or examined?
It was, and I think Kevin, maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, I had that same question, too, if we could get to 20 feet setback somehow.
Well, or, yeah, or even get to 30 or 35. The point is, is that I, I don't personally disagree that a 60-foot building 12 feet away, which kind of goes to some of our conversations regarding some of the other things, is a pretty tall building in your backyard. Go ahead, Kevin.
Sure, Kevin Barber with Tenfold Architecture. Out those vestibule with the double doors on the north side, that north wall is pushed as far north as we can put it. Right now, there's grease interceptors, water mains, sanitary sewer lines that all feed the hospital, the primary hospital, that are running down 11th Street. And the grease interceptor is not shown, but it would be setting in that green space.
Could you, could you bridge over, have a line of columns that would allow the upper floors to go over further and try and reduce some of the footprint on the ground? I'm just, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, I'm sure anything's possible.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, I was trying to think through, how can we get to go? And this is regarding just the size of the, the height of the building, and understanding that if it was 10 foot shorter, we wouldn't have this conversation regarding the setbacks, because that's allowed by ordinance, so.
Correct.
So the answer, so the immediate, the initial answer is no, it's not reasonably feasible. Correct.
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a further follow-up question as well. So if the townhomes weren't there, they, they serve as a buffer for properties then to the west. And so the hospital can already move the footprint of the new training facility further to the west, bring it down a 12 feet and be within, have a 12-foot setback. But then, then if people don't like looking at that building, then you're going to have even a greater visibility of that because you could take, really take the whole property and use it for this purpose. Am I, am I saying that correctly?
Correct, yeah.
Because I, so I see that, that as a, as an aesthetic benefit for the neighborhood to, to, in some ways, we're, we're doing two things with the townhomes. Tell me if I'm wrong in this. One is we're providing needed housing and close to the hospital. But secondly, providing additional buffer. But am I, am I saying that correctly?
That's, that's exactly what we were thinking about when we came up with the concept.
Okay, thanks.
I wish there were more buffer for those RM properties to the south, because that's, you know, it's not owned by the hospitals. So those people who live there are going to be impacted by what we decide today for that height of that building.
Any other questions for Gary? Thanks, Gary. All right, discussion.
After hearing the options that were discussed, I'm actually more interested in moving out the residential and allowing the, the hospital medical uses to be on the hospital medical zone, which doesn't require any sort of text amendment from us, and which theoretically could allow them to expand further in the future if that were a three-story building that were constructed, assuming it were constructed to take another story in the future. So thinking about what you said, John, about, you know, the needs changing and using up hospital medical space for residential, I'm coming down on the side of move the residential.
It's residential, but it's really adjacent to medical use, right? They're, they're putting it in there for the purpose of supporting medical services that they're providing at McFarland.
But there are residential lots available that could have the ability for a four-unit something. I don't know what, as you might recall, the discussions we had about the properties on Duff, those weren't supposed to be single-family homes. They were going to be multifamily. So I think there is the opportunity nearby to construct something that could house nurses or doctors in a multi, multifamily setting. I'm very concerned about those properties immediately to the south of a 60-story building with a 12-foot setback.
I understand that point, Gloria, and I think the compromise option would be alternative three, where we could require the minimum setback of 20 feet based on other similar zones, like highway-oriented commercial that a butts up next to residential. I think if we did this, it would probably require Mary Greeley to go back and look at the design. But there could be a possible way for them to still accomplish both goals on the property with a 20-foot setback. And I, I do think that density is important, especially in an area that's close to downtown and maximizing hospital medical space. So I think that continuing to have a building of that height is probably a better move than dropping it to 50 feet.
Well, as I understood it, though, if you didn't have the residential, which is not a hospital medical use, you could still have the same amount of space. It would just be in a shorter, wider building. So I don't think it compromises the, the training facility, which I, I mean, I can't argue with the need for that. And I, I completely support that. I'm not so much supporting creating residential on that hospital medical zone.
Anita, do you have any questions or comments? Not being here, but you're certainly listening online. Anything you have, do you want to ask or offer?
I am also leaning towards option six. I agree that there may be more opportunities within that area to consider housing for those individuals that might have need that are taking advantage of training or being temporary staff at Mary Greeley. Again, also just concerned about that community and making sure that those that live close to the hospital feel as if they are being a good partner.
Thank you. All right, any further comments or discussion? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion and see where we go from there.
I'm going to move option or alternative six.
Do not initiate amendments at this time?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I, I think I've already said why I support that. And Anita, I don't know whether you have anything to add.
Nothing additional, thanks.
I, I would like to observe, I think so much goes into projects like this. So we didn't get here overnight. So there was tremendous amount of work from the hospital to develop this. There's so much due diligence, the architectural side, tremendous feedback from the neighborhood. We had two people speak tonight from the neighborhood, made, I think, important points. We have a phenomenal hospital. I think this is an important opportunity to be supportive. And I'm interested in Rachel's proposal. I think there's got to be some way we can move forward on something tonight. So I, I would be voting no on this.
All right, those who hear the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion failed, all right.
I would move alternative three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
So, what?
Oh, I was just going to ask, is this also just limiting this to this portion of the hospital medical zone in a way that Amelia discussed?
Yes.
So that it would not have ripple effects?
And I would also ask if it's through, as an alternative design, through a major site development plan process?
Yeah, so just the motion, option three, right, Rachel? Initiate amendments to partially reduce the setback by eliminating the extra 30 feet of setback that require a minimum setback of 20 feet based on a height of 60 feet and allow the townhomes, but does not address the limiting, that the, this change to just this one particular area that would be across the entire...
Right, so you'd need to add as an alternative design through a major site development plan for properties that have a hospital as a principal use.
I'd be fine with that as friendly amendment.
Did you catch that, Jeremy? I mean, you got that, okay, right?
So this presents a sort of a fact question. I don't know if, can we ask Gary to clarify what the impact of this would be for the design?
I guess that might be a hard question for him to answer without having his architect go back and look at it. I think this is a philosophical. I mean, Gary, if you want to come up and address that, you can. If you say, we don't know, I think, yeah. So no, the answer is you won't come up and talk. No, that's the wrong way of putting it.
Right, my only concern, and I, I like the idea of trying to find a compromise. So I appreciate very much, Rachel, your proposal. My, my only concern is, and I think, John, you very helpfully raised the issue of the northern boundary. And we relocate underground infrastructure routinely. So that's a thing, if, if we just have to figure out the price tag and logistics on that. So maybe there could be some combination of, of moving this a bit to the north. And I don't know if the, if there's going to be some shavings of the dimensions to achieve, but it's, um, yeah.
If that's, if they have that parameter, I'm sure that the, the architects and engineers can figure stuff out, what, what they're going to do, so.
How, how did staff come up with this as an option?
Option three?
Yeah.
Just based on highway-oriented commercial setback adjacent to residential zoning, and then the adjacent zone residential median density for four-story structures has the same 20-foot setback. It wasn't through a feasibility analysis. I think the process, if you make this motion, would be, we won't start work on the amendment because you're allowing them to apply for it. So they determine if it was feasible before actually applying, and, and we'd start work at that point.
So there's still a lot more work that needs to be done on this to get, to get to a place where we're digging dirt, right?
Right, this is just initial, this is the first, this is the first step to apply for a text.
Yes, so this would allow them to apply for the text amendment with a reduction to 20 feet, whether or not they do that because it seems feasible. Would be up in the air.
Okay, everyone stand the motion as amended. Those who hear the motion, say aye.
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 May opposed or abstaining? Motion carried. Anything else that you need, Amelia?
That's it, thank you.
Very clear that this is going to be, when this approach is going to be, we're going to really, this is going to be only this one particular area.
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll move into IM32 Climate Action Plan Update. All right, we will continue on with IM32 Climate Action Plan Update. Nolan, Don, and Paul, welcome.
Thanks. Good evening. We're excited to present to you tonight just the work that we've done over the last year around the Climate Action Plan and other sustainability initiatives that we've done here at the city. You might remember that this time last year, we hired our first time, our first full time sustainability coordinator. So Nolan's officially been with us for about a year now, and he's been able to help us move this work along. So with that, I'll turn it over to him to present our slides tonight.
Thank you, Paul. And it's been exactly one year today. So it's been, it's been an exciting year. And it's been about two years since the Climate Action Plan was first accepted by City Council. So just as a brief review of the plan, this is the chart that I would best use to describe the plan as a whole. So it charts our entire greenhouse gas emissions from the whole community over time up to 2050. So we've set a goal at 94% for reduction of those greenhouse gas emissions over that period of time. And plan to reach those targets through the six big moves and the 31 strategies outlined in the plan. So we'll go over kind of our progress on the six big moves tonight, starting with renewable energy generation. So I'll pass it over to our Director of Electrical Services, Don, to talk about that.
All right, thank you. So as, as council knows, right now, we have roughly about 15% green renewable. And that's based on wind, solar, and then the RDF that we're burning today. Some of the recent changes at the federal level will make it tougher as we move forward. As council is keenly aware of, some changes there are impacting us from a standpoint of the investment or Inflation Reduction Act, which would have brought 30%. However, there are still some projects, if you get them in this year, predominantly, they are going to be solar projects that can still qualify. Council, if you recall, has approved contract, if you will, where we're working with a wind and solar developer, and they continue to look at, at sites both within Ames and then outside in the local areas in other counties near us. So we're going to continue to pursue those. However, the numbers will be changing if the federal dollars aren't there. So nothing great to report on that. I will say that later tonight on the council agenda, we are talking retail solar. We're going to be looking at changes to the municipal code that we think will really put a shot in the arm on residential or retail solar. And we're talking about how we can really kick that off over the next six months while there's both the federal credits and the increased rebates that we'll be offering. So I don't have a lot to report on renewables. We're just trying to ferret out all of the changes that have been happening. And we'll get back to council as we more understand how the funding might happen.
Don, just one, one quick question on this. So we're looking at our portfolio. Could you give us just a couple of sentences on what's happening to the grid? Because we're such a large percentage of energy we use, we're buying off the grid. Are there trends that we should think about from a green energy perspective there?
So the, the industry as a whole is really taking a hard look at what's happening because it's not just impacting us, it's impacting many, many projects that are in the queue. Can you meet the deadlines? Can you get it installed? Can you, you meet all of those? Iowa is obviously known as a very windy state, and there's a plethora of wind here. However, when we buy off of the grid, for example, it's not just wind coming to us. It's being used by the utility that typically built it. So it's not like we can say that MISO, which is the regional group, is necessarily greener than, say, we could be if we built our own wind and solar. But everybody is, is pausing to figure out how this impacts them. We don't see a lot of projects coming to fruition where people are saying, hey, I'm building wind. Would you like a piece of it right now?
So what we're seeing here in our, our small piece is consistent with what you're saying in MISO generally?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Don. So our second strategy, building retrofits. This one is focused on our existing building stock, you know, operating those buildings, residential, commercial, industrial, just using less energy. So improving the efficiency of those buildings. And our rebate program has been successful at doing that over the last few years. I'm going to highlight the chart on the left. Really impressed by the heat pump numbers just over the last two years. The, the number of heat pump rebates has tripled from 39 to 121. And then the associated reduction in air conditioning, air conditioning rebate. So that suggests people are transitioning, you know, to heat pumps from air conditioners, which is great to see. It benefits the utility by bringing on, you know, increased winter load for heating. And then those equipment are also more efficient generally than air conditioners. Also increases in EV charging and heat pump water heaters there on the right. So looking ahead, we have some exciting programs that we've been working on, mainly an energy efficiency financing program, a concept that we've been developing where you could finance your energy efficiency retrofit with the utility and pay that investment back on your bill over time. So we've been working with the Iowa Economic Development Authority and the Energy Efficiency Institute on a feasibility study funded by the state office. And that will conclude here in September. And so I'll have a good idea of what a program like that could look like as far as design and operations. And then been exploring the Rural Energy Savings Program. This is a federal program through the USDA that offers zero interest loans to utilities who then reloan that those capital dollars out to their customers for energy efficiency projects. So that could be a potential great source of, you know, zero interest capital to fund an energy efficiency program like the one that we're developing in the feasibility study. So I'm expect we'll be back to council later this fall with, with more of that built out into a proposal.
We're considered rural?
The USDA does consider us rural. It was a question at one point, but they've made the determination.
So does the USDOT, and we're trying to get lined up to try and get a grant. So there is some benefit to be considered, you know, rural. I asked the same question, like, we're rural? And I think it's pretty high threshold in terms of size for rural.
It is program specific with the federal government, so it wouldn't apply. I'm not sure if it does apply to that program, but the threshold is 50,000 for your population. And we propose to carve out a Iowa State University as they operate their own utility system. And they granted that exception. Advanced metering. So as you know, we'll be rolling out advanced metering around the town. And that will enable the time of use rates, although anyone will be able to optionally opt into time of use rates. This is a different rate structure than we typically have offered. So it's based on the time of day. Electricity will be more expensive during our peak hours in the afternoon and less expensive at night and in the morning. So that's monetary incentive to shift your usage away from those peak hours. They'll provide, you know, peak demand reductions for the utility. And then folks generally reduce their energy use total, you know, on time of use rates because you're thinking about your energy more. So it'll be great to see where that program goes. And then we've got Green Iowa AmeriCorps. This was a partnership approved by council earlier in, in January. So starting in October, we'll host two AmeriCorps members here at City Hall. And their primary responsibility will be to administer energy efficiency services for the community. So they'll be doing, they'll be trained, and then they'll be out doing energy audits and free weatherizations for interested residents. So we'll equip them with light bulbs, spray foam insulation, really quick and easy direct install measures that you could do around the home to save energy, I think maybe 10 to 15% in that range off of your energy bill. So not only will this help folks to save money on their energy bills, but also, you know, as we've been discussing, peak demand reductions. They'll have those benefits to the utility as well. And the partnership with AmeriCorps allows us to do that very cost effectively, run this weatherization program. So we're hoping to weatherize 70 homes in the first year with that program.
Are we confident that AmeriCorps will still exist?
They did survive the extensive cuts to AmeriCorps. So their contract is in place at least for this next year. All right. And then in line with big move number two, retro, building retrofits. We've been focusing a lot on our municipal buildings, undertaking this large energy audits project with our 16 largest buildings in the city's footprint. So very comprehensive energy efficiency analysis. They'll be developing specific recommendations for our buildings, including broadly energy efficiency and then solar and electric vehicle charging as well. So we'll have a really good baseline for our buildings to understand what are the opportunities to reduce our carbon footprint and our energy use. So we expect that project to wrap up here in the next couple of weeks. And then different departments will be able to use that information incorporated into their capital planning, you know, in the short and long term. And then also on municipal buildings, on the new build side, it is policy now that we're looking at all new buildings, at least evaluating for net zero already. So we're understanding what that incremental cost is to get a new building to net zero already. And then those will be decided, you know, by council on a case to case basis. You know, if it's cost effective, you know, if it's worth it to take that extra step.
A quick question on that one. Is this also being looked at for the animal shelter retrofit?
Yeah, so we've included the, the new animal shelter in the energy audits project. So that facility is being evaluated for solar feasibility. All right, number three, this strategy is focused on new construction, so new buildings that are being built. Our primary strategy here has been around incentives. So that's really our main policy tool in this area as these new builds are mostly market driven out there and not touched by the city directly. So we have two incentive programs here, one through electric. It's a $3,000 direct incentive for buildings that meet our standards for net zero already. So we did nine of those last year. And then we also have a enhanced tax abatement program. So this is in addition to the tax, the standard tax abatement offered. If you build your home, you know, to these higher standards, then you could qualify for additional tax abatement. So that program's relatively new. I don't think it's seen any use yet. And then looking ahead, we've had some productive conversations around staff and with the Home Builders Association around a pilot project. So this could be a partnership with a builder to build a demonstration house that we could use as a real education opportunity for the community. All of our different stakeholders that would be involved in the building market, partnering with the city on a building, on a demonstration project like that. So still, you know, early developing that concept and, and would expect to be back to council with that as well at some point. And then we've got a Hurson-Walback development too that, that you all are aware of. Those will be all electric efficient homes. So we'll continue to pursue those strategies when they're available for, for developments that the city has a hand in. All right, moving on to our fleet. So 10 fully electric vehicles out there in our city fleet, that's out of about 200 vehicles. So 10 may not seem like much, but 5% is a real big step for fleet electrification. We'll be considered on the leading edge of that, you know, in our region for municipal fleets to have, you know, 5% of our vehicles to be fully electric. 19 hybrid vehicles on top of that. Hybrid's still a great option for vehicles that cannot be electrified due to either operations or charging, other logistical issues like that. So look at continuing, continuing to evaluate vehicles as they come up for replacement, either for electric or for hybrid. And then want to highlight the B-100 program as well. That's been successful with the snowplows for a number of years. Cyride has a few buses that they've piloted the B-100 on. And then in our new waste model with the transfer station where we'll, we'll be doing a little bit more long hauling, evaluating those trucks as well for conversion to running on B-100. So it is a great option for those heavy duty vehicles that are much more expensive to electrify. And then on the charging side, we delivered over half a million miles of EV charging through our 10 charging stations that are out there in the community. So those are seeing some great use. And then looking at some additional installations, the soonest ones here at City Hall, those should be in by the end of September. There's two, two additional charging stations that are going in the north lot here at City Hall. So, and then
So on, on that, how do we, do we have any more, a better sense of how we right size that infrastructure in the community?
Sure. And the City Hall is a great example of that. Two charging stations going in. One will be for fleet, city fleet use only, and one will be for public use. So we're monitoring how the public stations and how our city fleet only stations are being used to ensure that it is being thought out. And the next point here is about the Charging Smart program. Through that program, we did an initial fleet electrification analysis. So looking at where are all of our buildings, what facilities they report to? What's the capacity at those buildings and their electrical systems for electric vehicle charging? To avoid costly upgrades, sometimes when, when you do have to upgrade buildings for electric vehicle charging. And then what are the vehicles being used for? You know, some, some vehicles are very easy to transfer over. You can go one for one. And some vehicles, depending on what they're being used for, they have tools or there's a specialty use. Those vehicles are a lot more challenging to decarbonize. So focusing on the passenger vehicles first and then gradually transitioning to some of those harder vehicles to, to switch over.
Good, thanks.
Sure.
Are any of these fast charging stations?
So the city has one fast charger that's located down on Highway 30. And then Tesla also has some fast chargers here in the city that can be used.
So none of these new ones are going to be adding to that number?
Well, there's currently a grant, to be honest, we were talking about that today, that may allow us. It's, it's a unique grant that, that will pay for the lion's share of a level three charger, but it must be in the downtown area. We, we have a couple of sites that we're looking at that create some unique challenges because we need a transformer. We need to be by three phase power and things like that. So I don't want to give away that site yet, but we have a couple of neat sites in, in mind.
And then Charging Smart. So this is a nationally recognized program funded by the Department of Energy that it's involved with lots of different industry organizations. And they work with communities to benchmark best practices around policies and practices around fleet electrification, electric vehicle charging. And it's a recognition designation program as well. So they do bronze, silver, gold designations, depending on how many of these best practices you have in place. And we recently just found out a couple of weeks ago that we received the silver designation from Charging Smart. So that was a great validation of the work that, that staff has done so far. We're the first community in Iowa to be designated under the Charging Smart program. So that's also exciting to see. The other area they helped us out with was under multifamily EV charging. Around 40% of our housing here in Ames is multifamily. And folks living in multifamily have, you know, much, much more difficult access to EV charging as they don't have control over, obviously, installing those. So they helped us understand potential policy approaches and different strategies that the city could pursue to address that barrier. All right, also in transportation, moving on to active transportation and transit. This strategy is based on the fact that even if you do electrify, the lowest carbon way to get around is by walking, biking, and taking public transit. So Cyride ridership is among the highest in the nation. It continues to increase post pandemic each year. And then we've got our bike and pedestrian infrastructure, 86 miles of that out there. I believe that's on the agenda tonight as well. And $3 million planned over the next two years to expand that infrastructure. So we look forward to future developments there. And then we put out our bicycle and transportation device survey, public survey, had a healthy response to that a few weeks ago. And we'll continue to develop that ordinance in a way that promotes safety, but also promotes the use of these sustainable modes of transport. All right, number six, this big move is centered around reducing the emissions from how we handle our waste here in town. our waste here in town. Just wanted to highlight, Rumage Rampage kicks off this Friday. Very excited for that annual event. This will be the ninth annual Rumage Rampage. Just the impact that that's had over the, over the nine years. It's hard to summarize just here in this slide, but 433 tons diverted, you know, $285,000 raised for local nonprofit organizations over those nine years. So very much look forward to putting on that event again this year. We'll point your attention over to the chart on the right. So this handles, this displays all of our recycling on an annual basis. And the green section of that chart is just from Rumage Rampage. So every other section of the chart is from the entire year, and the amount of recycling that we do. And I think it's impressive that Rumage Rampage even shows up on this chart, even though it's only nine days. So it's really highlights that. And then the other highlight from this chart is the, the significant increase in 2024 compared to 2023 because of our drop off recycling facilities over there at Resource Recovery. So it's a pretty significant increase in recycling due to those. Lots of changes coming to our waste system, as you're all aware of, over the next couple of years with the new transfer station model. So we expect our recycling to increase with those drop off facilities. And then we're also, we'll be back at our next council meeting to have an initial discussion around community curbside recycling. So we won't be asking for council decisions or specific actions at that time, but to have an initial discussion around what a curbside recycling program could look like. We've done some research around best practices around other communities, and we'll see council input in that topic there on, on August 12th.
And we'll see on this, on this chart too, if you notice that 2024, there's a huge cardboard number in there, and we're really proud of how that program has been accepted by the community.
Then for a little context here too, while our current diversion rate is very high, it's over 50% due to the, our incineration, our power plant and RDF operations. We estimate our current recycling rate to be around 2% compared to the US average, around 32%. And then for additional context, about two, about three quarters of waste is technically recyclable or compostable. So I think that's very exciting that we have an opportunity to design a recycling program at this time and, and try and take advantage of that and, and try and reach the highest diversion rate, highest recycling rate that we can over the next few years.
So that's, I have not seen that statistic before. So we're currently at 2%, but nationally it's 32%. So we've, we've got a work cut out for us to pivot this community towards that curbside recycling. That's, that's daunting.
Yes. Keep in mind though, that right now, instead of recycling, it's going to the power plant, and we're turning waste to energy. So it's not like 98% of our waste is going to landfills.
I realize that.
But, okay.
Yep.
And then a couple of other areas of sustainability that we wanted to highlight. So our grants and funding opportunities. So we kicked off our first year of the, our city administered climate action grants program. So we issued about $40,000 to five awardees under that grant program. And we can see them listed there on the right. Five fantastic projects that we're looking forward to partnering with, helping those projects come to fruition. These are all community-led organizations and projects that will have benefits that extend well beyond the grant period, you know, into the future for the organizations and for folks participating in their programs and for the broader community. And then our youth mini-grants as well. We've got six of those projects that are going on right now. Those are $500 each eligible for high schoolers, middle schoolers, you know, any school age student or group of students could apply for that program. So there's lots of great education outreach activities going on with those projects. One group held an event at the library the other day. They used grant funds to purchase starter plants and pots and dirt, and they handed out about 100 of those to, to attendees, other high school students, folks that came into the library to grow their own food at home. So one example of, of a project that there are local high schoolers are taking on in regards to sustainability. So I think that's inspiring to see. And then on the other side of grants, grants that we've applied for over the last year, can see four of them listed here. Two of those, the Community Change Grant and the Climate Smart Communities Initiative Grant, we've heard back that will not be receiving funding on those. The Solid Waste Infrastructure Grant, we expect to hear back this winter. That would go towards the transfer station. And then we've discussed the Rural Energy Savings Program. We're midway through that process. It required an initial letter of intent that we've submitted, and then USDA has invited us now to apply for that, for that program. All right, education outreach, I view this as a vitally important part of my role. So I've had very much enjoyed these other, these education and outreach opportunities over the past year. I wanted to highlight our new webpages. If you haven't had a chance recently to check out the sustainability pages on our website, they're very much changed from where they used to be, including an electric vehicles page and a climate action dashboard, where in fact, all of the charts that we saw tonight are just screenshots from that publicly available dashboard. So I feel like it's transparent, or it's important for us to be transparent about our data and about our progress on the climate action plan. You know, in addition to these annual reports to council, you know, we'll be updating that dashboard on the website periodically with new data.
Nolan, where are we now on our solar farm in terms of the percentage of packs sold?
Right now, we have about 87% of them sold, give or take. So we still have a few available yet in the solar, in the solar farm.
See, we had the opportunity to host an event out there at the solar farm, where folks got to go see, see the farm in person, the sheep, the bees, that call that place home. That was a great event to talk to folks about it. And then our open house for heat pumps as well went very well at the library. Had some really meaningful discussions with residents about, you know, heat pumps and solar technologies. Attended about 25 speaking and tabling events, split about down the middle between speaking and tabling events. Again, very meaningful conversations with folks out there in the community about sustainability. Folks are very interested in this work. They want to be involved. So very happy to do that. We kicked off our newsletter, so we have two of those out. We're going to be doing that quarterly, Sustainable Ames Newsletter. So I think that's a great, a great place where we can have our sustainability information in one place and send that out to folks' inboxes. Lots of collaborations with Susan and the Communications and Outreach Team on press releases, social media posts, videos, you know, all these great tools that we have to get the message out there. And then a few of us had the opportunity to go down to the state capitol earlier last year and accept the Resilient Iowa Communities Award, which is a recognition, you know, broadly of our sustainability efforts here. And then touched on Rumage Rampage as well, a great education outreach opportunity focused on reducing and reusing waste.
And I just mentioned too, is that I think we're the only, we're the only community that got like five different categories. Maybe Don, you want to just highlight that? I mean, it was quite a, quite a nice recognition.
Yep. It was. Yeah, we were the only community to get gold, and then we got gold in all five categories. All right, so I touched on all these, just as a recap of what we're looking at for the next year. I won't go through these individually because they were on the previous slides, but just wanted to highlight, we have lots of exciting programs that, that we're continuing to work on over the next year. So thanks for your time today and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Nolan. Questions for Nolan?
Before we kicked off the Climate Action Plan work that we did, we had a greenhouse gas inventory done. Do we have that programmed in at some point to sort of benchmark to see what progress we're making?
That's a great question, and something that I probably should have included in the slideshow, but we are in progress on the greenhouse gas inventory update currently. So we've, we've just received data back from, it involves, you know, extensive data requests through our different utilities and different folks throughout the community. So we've received most of that data back and are processing it and working on updating that inventory.
So do you, so do you think we'll get a report to council this year, or is that something in the spring? Or I don't know how long it takes to process that.
Yeah, I would say within the next two to three months, we should have that complete. And then we're looking at doing, depending on how extensive that is, I will say most communities will contract that out. So we're going to, to do that in-house this year, reevaluate the process, and then determine if it would be best to do that on a two, probably two or five year basis going forward.
And then my, my last question, so much going on in terms of the price of solar panels. So you anticipate there being more opportunities for residential and commercial implementation of solar or, or less as, as we look at the current pricing of, of solar panels?
I think it will take a while for the market to adjust to these drastic changes that, that have happened with the, the tax credits, the federal tax credits going away. But the cost of solar over the last, if you look at over the last 10 to 20 years, has dropped very significantly. It's still a cost effective way to produce energy. And we would expect that to still, to still be a solution, utility scale for the utility, and then also at the residential scale for rooftop.
So you would, you would anticipate the, the, the additional, having additional properties come in at a consistent rate, as we've seen? Is that what you would anticipate?
Especially with our enhanced rebate.
I think you're going to see a big push here between now and the end of the year, because that's, that's when both the federal tax credits are available and our increased rebates. What happens after that come January remains to be seen, how both the panel manufacturers, if they're coming from overseas, how tariffs might impact them. Loss of the federal funding will negatively impact that. And the other thing that's a good thing is, is our rates are very low. So typically, a payback on a solar project on a home is a long payback, just because our rates are so low.
Thanks.
All right, very good. Thank you for the update. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good work. Happy anniversary. All right, Lilana, and number 32. And before we get right into it, Anita, are you on back as a panelist?
I am, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
We're just waiting for Susan. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I don't know. She just has to stand up in a major command, I guess.
So good evening. Tonight, Donald Kahn with the Electric Department and Curtis Spence, the Assistant Director. What we want to do tonight, and we've been talking about this for quite some time, tonight we're coming to you basically to talk about our new thermal generation, and it's one phase of it, one component, which is basically the engineering services that will start designing this. And we'll give you a little bit of background to bring everybody up to speed. Next slide, please. Okay, so what we want to talk about tonight is just briefly review where we've been, how we've gotten to where we're at, talk about our timeline on new generation for the City of Ames Electric Department. We're not necessarily seeking approval of the engineering services. We're really looking for council to give us direction to then basically develop a contract with this engineering services company. We'll talk a little bit more on that in a little bit. Questions that came from council over the last times that we've been meeting, and we'll bring Cory up here, because I know Cory is in the back of the room, talk a little bit about the impact as we move ahead with this project, talk about how that impacts electric rates. And then there were questions that council had on, on the site that staff was recommending, and give you some more information on the benefits of that site and what it may take to move it to another location. Do want to point out too, that, that Eurab has been extensively involved in this whole process, and we've had no fewer than probably seven or eight meetings over the last couple of years, up to and including capital improvement plans and things like that, that, that we'll talk about here shortly. Just hit them all, thanks. Okay, so if you recall, when we were here on June 17th, we talked about these, we talked about five guidelines, and I'm just going to focus on two of them tonight. But the three areas that we continue to focus on as utility is, we want to have a reliable system. We want to have a sustainable system, and we want to make it affordable, continue to, and leave it affordable for our customers. Two of those guidelines that we talked to you about before, one is to be able to city, serve the city's peak at any time. That's with thermal generation. We like wind, we like solar, but it's non dispatchable. In other words, the wind blows, we get energy. The sun shines, we get energy. But when neither of those things are around, we also need thermal generation, both as a capacity resource, and then also to provide energy if we need it. So it creates a ceiling for energy prices, which is great in these volatile energy markets. We do have the ability to sell some energy when our units are the most cost effective. We could produce energy not only for ourselves, but for the region. And then it creates a ceiling for capacity prices. I think we mentioned at the last meeting, using unit eight as an example, had we, do we, had we not had unit eight, we'd be paying somewhere in the neighborhood of three to $4 million for the current summer season to replace that capacity that we have in a unit that sits at the end of Main Street. The third key guideline in our utility plan development is then we want to maintain and keep our customer costs competitive, basically looking at the surrounding utilities, both serving customers in Ames and within the state. Again, this is a slide you've seen before. Currently, we have about 28,000 customers, and we have a peak demand of 138 megawatts. We are not setting a new peak tonight. Steve always asked me that, so we're not setting a peak tonight or tomorrow with this hot weather. Our energy consumption by our customers is about 630,000 megawatt hours. Doing a 10-plus year plan out there, we're saying, okay, where are we going to be 10 years from now, when we believe we'll have about 30,000 customers? Our peak demand will grow, we believe, by about 22 megawatts. That's significant. I mean, it's, it's not a fast growth, if you think about 10 years, but it's significant from a standpoint of how much generation we have today and what we need to get to 160 megawatts. We also believe then our, our energy sales will be roughly 10% higher at about 700,000 megawatt hours.
Don, before you go any further-
Yes, sir.
Sometimes people come into this conversation and aren't aware of some of the background. Would you just, on a thermal generation, I mean, first of all, what are your points? No longer burning RDF. That's really a key component too, as you mentioned, about the cost that it is to have to burn RDF versus buying electricity on the grid. But also, what's the expected life expectancy for like unit seven and unit eight, and how far beyond that to show that there's a need to be going in a different direction, or we need to replace these units?
Okay, I'll touch on that briefly. So unit seven, as you can see on the left-hand side, was put in in 1967. Units of that type typically have about a 30-year life expectancy. As you can see, by 2027, that'll have 60 years on it. That's extraordinary for what, it was a natural gas plant, then we converted it to coal, then we converted it back to natural gas, and that's extraordinary in and of itself. Burning refuse derived fuel makes it even more extraordinary because of the, the impacts that, that plastics and stuff like that have within the boiler. So we believe about the time we end burning RDF, unit seven will, will need to be replaced. The other unit of the gas turbine is fine. In fact, we have the brand new rebuilt unit, was installed this week, and that is up and running on gas turbine number one. But unit eight is a 1982 vintage unit. And again, I could almost ask for how many people in the room were around in 1980, in 1982, and unit eight was built. But again, that is also aging. But by limiting the impacts of RDF, refuse derived fuel burned in eight, we believe we can extend that life for a good 10-plus years. It all depends upon how much we run with unit eight, with RDF, and what continued maintenance we can do to keep that, that unit functioning.
Point being that these are wearing out, and they have far exceeded their life expectancy from unit seven, and unit eight is probably-
Getting close also.
Getting close also. So the point is, your face is in something regardless of what, what transpired. So it's just an opportune time to-
Yes.
Thank you.
And with the discontinuation of RDF, it also helps on the financial side, because today, how we run to, to burn the RDF, you have to mix the RDF with a considerable amount of natural gas. So oftentimes, we are running the plant with a lot of natural gas, which is, which is greenhouse gases. And by discontinuing that, and especially with the way natural gas prices are going, we should be able to show you that the, financially, we can do this very efficiently. And we'll get to that in the slides coming up. Okay, the mayor mentioned this in the, in the slides, again, back on- Okay, the mayor mentioned this in the in the slides again, back on June seventeenth. We talked about some of the future health assessments of unit seven and unit eight. I want to focus on two of them tonight, and that's the retirement of unit seven will will happen sometime after the completion of the RDF program. That could be twenty seven, that could be twenty eight, but unit seven has a limited life available in it unless we want to put considerable amount of money into the unit. I don't remember if we added the slide to that, but to bring if council remembers, we had a slide that talked about critical was red and then we had a moderate and then yellow. And just to complete all of the critical work, it would cost two thirds the cost of a brand new unit. So again, staff firmly believes that making additional investments in unit seven is impractical compared to what you can do with with brand new units. And that's what point number three is. Next slide. So when we start looking at costs, and Cory, this is your slide to start moving this way if you're, oh, there it's good. Wanted to also point out that we've talked to council not only in June, we had a meeting last December, but we also talked to council in March when we did our capital improvement plan. Already built into the capital improvement plan is the funding for up to three rice engines. Rice again is reciprocating internal combustion engine, basically a big diesel engine that can burn both natural gas and diesel fuel. Will replace unit seven with that. Plus, we think we need to meet some expected growth. That's why we're looking at at up to three units. These units have extremely fast response time. If you look at our unit seven and unit eight, they take six and twelve hours respectively to start up. These units could start as quickly as two minutes. So it offers some very responsive units that can respond when the wind doesn't show up, when the sun isn't shining. Next slide.
When you say black start.
Yep.
Remember, we had the Dray show and you had a problem getting the boilers back up. Is that going to be, is that not going to be, would that be not an issue with this one? Or else, or how is that taken? So we don't have that problem again?
Correct. There's there's a couple of things we've done. So GT one, which is the unit we just repaired, is also following the Dray show. We spent excessive time working with the unit to make it a black start capable unit. So we have that sitting out.
Playing with black start is again.
So what black start is, is basically you can fire up a generator where you have what's called a dead bus or a zero bus. It can come up to speed, sync onto the system, provide voltage, and then you can start picking up the city. So we would be in control of our destiny if something like a Dray show were to happen again, whereas before.
This new system would allow us to also accomplish that.
These units would also have that black start capability. Yes.
Even better reliability.
Very much so. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. Before I turn it over to Cory, so just walking through here, the the timeline. Back in May of twenty twenty four, we did the unit health assessment, looked at different generation technology and hired a couple of engineering firms to help us on that. We then went to Bright Night and performed an optimization study. In other words, they looked at the various types of units and said, which would function better if we had them in Ames with our pricing in MISO with the wind as we know would operate with the solar as we know would operate? And how would these units operate? So that helped us to define which of the type of technology is the best. We came to council on the December twenty four and reported the new generation needs. We then presented our CIP in January. Had another meeting with council on June seventeenth and tonight, we're hearing about at least looking at procuring engineering services and then starting the permitting process. This timeline is is significant because the delay in units, the delay in transformers, the delay in switchgear are oftentimes two years, possibly three years. So once we do contract for engineering services, this is just a heads up is we do plan on coming back to council yet this year. Looking for some Christmas presents in terms of ordering engines, ordering transformers and ordering some of the the gear that we're going to need to to meet that May twenty twenty eight operating start date. So we're not here to talk about that tonight, but we'll be meeting with council several times in the coming coming months. Next slide.
So I'm going to take it over before Cory here. Talking about the engineering services. So in our capital plan right now that was approved by council, we have eighty four million for three new generation, the the rice units. And that was to replace seven and some additional capacity like what Don was describing. Ten percent of that roughly was planned for engineering and construction services. The engineering services that we're talking about tonight has to do only with the engineering and not the construction services. So we sent out an RFP on May first, we received six responses. And we had a committee go through and put together a scoring scheme and individually look through that, score them. We chose two of the top firms to come in and interview them. And we're looking at their experience, their understanding of our needs, their displayed abilities to be able to respond to our services and just overall their understanding of how to how to build one of these plants. Obviously, we do not do this very often. And also, the the reciprocating engines have been obviously around for quite some time as far as that technology. But a reciprocating engine this large and also generating electricity is pretty new to the industry. So we're looking at these things are over three hundred tons, they're two and a half stories tall. I mean, they're very large. And so we wanted to really find an engineering firm that had the experience with how to install, what to look for and all the details that that really made out for a good solid power plant. And so the committee determined that Sergeant Lundie in Chicago was the most qualified to perform the work. They definitely stood out with their experience. They had over a dozen plants that they had designed and installed throughout the US. And in fact, our staff had visited two of them and we we went on site, worked with the utility and understanding how that project went, what they think about it, how the the engineering firm was able to perform for them. And both of those sites are are operational now, and so we were able to see what the outcome was in those situations. Sergeant Lundie, because of that experience, they have, they were able to speak to a lot of of just understanding their their lessons learned, I suppose, that we're able to to really gain from. And so that was a big advantage for them. The other item is that these large engines, there's two primary manufacturers right now that that are capable of making this this large engine. And Sergeant Lundie is the only engineering firm with experience with installing a plant with one of those in the US. And so that was that was definitely a big key component for Sergeant Lundie. They estimated thirty eight thousand project hours will be needed. So that was equivalent to almost seven million, the six point eight eight five. And but this project will be planned, it's planned as a time material. We want them to help us understand some of those nuances that we weren't going to put together a very detailed specification on. This is exactly how it's going to be built because we want to learn from them and understand some things. So we understand that with the time material that we think we'll get a better build with that. And so we'll hold them to that dollar amount. So tonight, we'll be asking council for approval to negotiate an agreement with them. And before you do that, we wanted to address those two items that Don was talking about that council's brought up before, particularly on the seventeen, June seventeenth meeting with the siting and the rate impacts.
Before we move on to that, so we have to kick the tires a little bit. This is a big price tag on this, so I have two questions. So it's quite a range in the number of hours for this. And is it possible to explain in layman terms that the proposal is for a firm six point eight nine million dollars, thirty seven thousand seven hundred ninety hours? But KCL, KCL Engineering out of Iowa City, two and a half million dollars, ninety six hundred. So there's a pretty wide delta between those those bids. Is it possible, like, what is it they're doing for thirty seven thousand hours?
I think one of the things that caught my attention when we interviewed them is when you're doing an engineering project this complex, they had a series of steps. So they'll hand an engineering team, okay, let's design X, let's design the electrical system. That engineering team then sends it up to their boss. Their boss then, who has much more experience, will review everything. There's some checks and balances. It'll even go through another process above that where they, it was like a process of a QC process they would go through just to make sure everything was aligned. And I think in a firm that's only offering something like nine thousand hours on such a complex project, we would be concerned about more of the ability, can we catch any errors or can we catch any things that that aren't linked together and not working? And again, the thirty eight thousand is a projection based on time and materials. It could easily come in, I shouldn't say easily, it could come in less than that too. So it's how much, how involved we are in the project. But for me, it was the quality.
And I would say that it was it was very apparent looking at the firms that had direct experience with these kinds of builds. It seemed that some firms were relying on just reciprocating engine experience. Smaller engines, much easier to move around, much easier to build a foundation for them. Easy to to work around the sound attenuation and things that needs to happen. I mean, just the the gantry systems and the the thought process that needs to go into just getting these things on site as well as having the foundations so that these things are independent and they're not bothering neighbors and things because of this low DVC or this low vibration that could be bothering others. But then there's also the component around permitting of of such engines. And so there is doing the permitting and the regulation part as well. And then designing those components around the permitting. And so there, it's not just the emissions to a stack. There's definitely some emissions controls put on and put in place. And then meeting with those vendors that supply all of these components as well and understanding those components. So one item is that there will be pretty large radiators involved, a number of very small fans. And those fans have to be thought about of the sound and the construction of those fans. And so there's a lot of detail that they have to look at for for us to understand and make sure that all of those components are fitting into this package correctly.
And so this is, so we're looking at six, almost seven million dollars just on the engineering. How much will the actual generator cost?
Ballpark. Yeah, ballpark would be ten to fifteen million.
Each one. So we're looking at an overall, just the engine.
And then one more question. So this isn't the only one that we're going to be bringing in. Like I was hoping this would be just, you just bring it in a truck and you plug it in, but apparently it's not like that, right? But so if we if we do this and make this investment on this unit, can, is it possible that this would work for additional units so we we wouldn't have to go through this same engineering?
This isn't just for the generations. This is for the whole building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
For the whole development, this is cutting to the grid system.
And we're looking at.
Wiring wiring. I mean, this is a very complicated project. It's not just designing a an a rice or engine, right?
Right, that's correct. So the engine design will be
Part of it.
Performed by the manufacturer, but it's putting the whole facility together. So yeah, it's the, it's preparing the site, it's the building that goes around the engine.
The electrical system, the fuel systems.
So, okay, and I, and thanks for the clarification this. So this is creating the the broader building and eventually we will add, how how many of these will we be adding?
This first, this first stage will be three engines, two to three, depending on the sizes, but it's scoped for three engines.
And so this this engineering cost will will be inclusive of of all of those three, right?
That's correct.
So we won't have additional engineering as we add additional units. Am I saying that correctly?
Not those three. I mean, ultimately, when ten years from now, let's say we start looking at the life, the the end of life on unit eight. The idea here is is we could easily look at three more to replace that in ten years. So the idea is this is, I don't want to call it phase one because this is what we need today. But we will look at the capabilities. We're we're planning the site as a as a continuation on the site for further units somewhere down the road when we need them.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
And there will be some 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 commonality that will be already planned by this engineering firm, such as the control room. And where the components come into the control room and all the controls and the base for that. That will all be already built for any additional. And so the design that this this engineering firm will be helping us with will be having, will be for this phase, but then also to plan for future development.
So there will be fees in the future when you add additional engines to, but basically the building's done. And that's why I planned to have these brought in. I was just stunned when you say it was, each one is three hundred tons. Just the idea of how are you going to bring this, I mean, I don't think they'll fit in my back of a pickup truck. You know, it's just amazing the size of that logistics getting into it. So I'm presuming that's all figured into and they're helping strategize. That's what I think I heard you say. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. No, the design of this phase will be for an engine compartment that will only house the three for this phase. Now, for future development, we'll have the space and things to continue to expand on that, but we won't have a building that will house six and only have three in it. This is only for the three engines and a control room. Now, if we do, when we we do replace eight and we continue to do these engines in the future, we'll have the control room built. And so it'll be just taking a wall off and continuing to stack out three more.
And it's just curious why there wouldn't be a larger building to start with that would allow you to go ahead and just slag more in. But that's that's hitting the weeds.
No, I don't think so. I think that's a, that's an important question.
We'll look at it. If you build a bigger building up front, we're spending more money on a building up front, you've got to heat that building. So we'll kind of look at the at the cost benefit. You know, if it makes sense just to build a building once and have it done. We can, we can propose that.
To the mayor's point.
Interesting cost.
So this is important. So to the mayor's point, we're looking at a time horizon of generation, how many years? That's the estimate.
Yeah, so phase one, we're looking at at install by twenty twenty eight. Phase two, we want to start reevaluating this in twenty thirty one as to how much life is left in unit eight. So we could have second set of units in twenty thirty five to twenty forty. Somewhere, just really depends upon the condition of eight, how our load is growing. We may need just one in in twenty thirty five if eight is still healthy. But the key with the design here is we're giving staff and we're giving council the flexibility that this is what we need today. Our long term plan is six units, but we can continue to evaluate that when we when we get to twenty thirty, twenty thirty one. And then we have the ability to say, here's where we're at now. We can redirect whether it's one unit, two units, three units, or maybe it's something different.
And that's, I think you've hit it right on the head. This is where I feel the most pressure on this. Because the community is expecting us to think really long term. So what we do here, we want future councils, assuming we're not still on council. I mean, I don't know if we're still planning on being council in thirty years, maybe maybe we turn over by then. So hopefully in thirty years, we'll have a new council. I want them to look back and say what what the council did in twenty twenty five was forward thinking and and long term. And and that's what I'm hearing is that this is positioning future councils for an infrastructure platform that will allow for that growth. Am I saying that correctly?
Absolutely, with the ability to be flexible five, ten years from now.
Yeah, thanks.
And I agree with you. I was, the price initially was eye opening. Shocking. All right, that's probably fair. But when you talked about the fact that this is the only company that has experience with two different manufacturers.
In large sizes.
If they could play the engine manufacturers against one another and try and hack them, sharpen their pencil because they know about that equipment, maybe. Maybe part of their fee difference would get compensated by getting a very competitive product unless it's decided that you, one shines above the other. But anyways, just we're getting. We have a lot of questions, I'm sure that you'd like to get into, but I think in terms of long term. Move on, please.
So then the next question then is, you know, how do we afford this? And I'm going to turn that over to Corey.
Sure. So, so the funding of these projects, I think initially is assumed to be an electric revenue bond. So we have a electric revenue bond, only one outstanding that matures in twenty twenty seven. So the utility is essentially without debt, which is, to be honest, pretty remarkable for a utility of that size. So I think the preliminary financial indicators mean, or show us that. The total debt service on eighty four million dollar electric revenue bond is about seven million dollars a year. So the industry standards for issuing those type of bonds require a coverage ratio, which is. The principal and interest payment in a given year times one point four percent. That's kind of an industry standard. So what that means is that our net operational incomes to cover this electoral, the electric revenue bond payment in, in any given year. Need to be approximately ten million dollars. So that's what we're looking at from an annual investment in our twenty years of an electric revenue bond debt service. Working with Don's team, we identified some, given the material changes in the utility, including the changes in our resource recovery plant. We had a list of about ten million or thirteen point four million dollars in cost reduction. And so you can kind of see, starting out at the top, I think this was brought up earlier. Six million dollars in natural gas production. So that's a result of the change in the municipal solid waste model. Three million dollars in operational savings as a result of switching the way that we're producing electricity. We'll have a, the end of a PPA agreement with, for wind generation. So that will be an important negotiation in the future. The electric utility also contributes nine hundred thousand dollars for the RDF that's produced at resource recovery. So obviously the model changes, that will go away. And then there's an estimated five hundred thousand dollars for the reduction in insurance premiums, just based on some guidance we've received from our risk manager and other insurance consultants. So that gets us to about thirteen point four million dollars, obviously exceeding about the ten million dollars in debt service, including the coverage requirement that we're talking about to fund the project.
Well, this is a very happy slide. But I want to drill down on the eighty four million dollars. Again, these are really big numbers for us. I just want to make sure that we understand what's in that number. So have we, have we included everything in terms of if you do these projections for adding the additional units? Are those included in the eighty four or would those be on top of the eighty four million? I just want to make sure we understand what's in that number.
So right now, the eight, and let, let's back up a little bit. The eighty four million represents, so we. As part of those studies that we had done over the last six, eight months. We had an engineering firm come out and say, this is what the cost is on a per megawatt basis to install this type of an engine. And we asked, okay, are the fuel systems included? Yes. Is the building included? Yes. The electrical systems to get it to the transformer? Yes. It does not include tying it into the substation. That's more of an electrical. Process, but it gets it to the transformer, to the step up transformer. We're going to talk a little bit about that when we come up to citing. Does it include tying into the local gas line that we have sitting there? Yes. It's the units themselves. It's the construction. It's all of the permitting. It's, and the permitting is not just at the state level. We also have to go before the I U Utilities Commission. And make a G, GCU filing. We have to go to MISO and get a MISO. Permit to tie that into the grid. Am I missing anything?
Yeah, and, and, no, you're not. I think it's a, it's, it's all inclusive if we're, that's the total dollar amount of that, that. Staff with the help of the engineering firm of the technology assessment, the dollar amount that came up. Now we'll have the engineer. Who were recommending council give us the ability to start negotiating a contract, give us a more precise estimate of exactly what that is. But this is comparing to a number of other builds that have been around the US. As well as using that engineer that helped us understand the total cost for such a site.
Is that in today's dollars or is that weighted to the twenty eight or twenty seven year?
That I believe is in today's dollars. However, it doesn't include any potential tariffs. These units, both, both sets of units are not US, are not made in the US right now. So depending upon what a tariff may do, that could change this number considerably.
Does that include fees, their fees, or is that in addition, are you taking that from a different fund or different source? The seven million dollars in fee.
We're taking it out of, out of this eighty four as part of the CIP.
But then that's conceptual. That's what I agree with consultant on to is more. Your, your question is really good, though, because you start, you start talking about three percent, four percent inflation on eighty four million dollars. And let's just ignore a tariff. All of a sudden, you start talking about real money about under six, seven, eight million dollars all of a sudden in two years potentially, and that may be conservative. Anyway, point is, that's where we're at right now.
Staff always gets to do, does value engineering. So we come in and work with the design engineer and you got to make changes. It'll save money. That's, that's what they'll do.
So, I mean, on this equation, the, the lower half, those are, those are firm numbers. We, we can, we know what those numbers are. But I, I'm just trying, I'm trying to make sure we've done our due diligence on that eighty four and just making sure that everything is in there. Just presuming that we've got inflation and it's to the best of our ability, making sure that we're confident in that number. But Corey, even.
We're, we're coming backwards, though. Good news is we have thirteen point four. And you figured ten is the coverage. We actually have a cushion that.
And that's, that's sort of my point is that there, there is some breathing room on that.
Budget, but, but let's just make sure we're not confident in those numbers. Remember, those are estimates based on conceptual discussions. Just like we're dealing with the animal control shelter, right? We're going to hire somebody who's going to design it and they're going to give us the latest numbers that you can maybe rely on better. This is the best information we have now without doing the exact design. Understand those will change.
Steve is very correct because these estimates, when, when an engineer would say, hey, I want to do this. What we're looking at is, is we're looking at all of the projects relative. And I think when we even presented these numbers. It was like a plus or minus fifty percent kind of, you know, they, engineers don't like to make firm. Things at that level. We got to get it designed and then they can put a, a more realistic number. However, we have compared this to other projects that have actually gone to construction. So that's why we're feeling. Comfortable with this number.
And that's what gives me the greatest comfort as well as if there, if there are apples that we can compare with our apples, then it gives us some sense that we're in the ballpark anyway.
I, I would say that what Don was explaining for the timeline. I mean, every, all utilities are scratching for ability to lock onto generation. There's a lot of building happening nationwide. And, and so there, you know, the lines continue to start to kind of get bigger as far as looking for these kinds of equip, this kind of equipment. Now, most utilities are much larger than ours. And so. These rice engines aren't as attractive to them because of what their operational parameters are. And so that, that's going to help us a lot because they're about two years out. The larger utilities are looking at combustion turbines that are four or five years out. They're a very long lead time and the prices continue to grow. And so what I was going to say is. We do plan on going after those specifications and going out for bid right away as soon as we can, once we get this engineering firm, so we can lock in those prices. And so we don't have to, to worry about what's it going to look like a year and a half now from, when we go to buy an engine or a transformer.
We want to order the engines in twenty twenty five.
That's so helpful. I, I promised my last question. So. The Wall Street Journal's had some fascinating articles on just the explosion of the, of the demand for generation. So AI. Just unbelievable demands, what China is, is building, what United States is building. So is, is, I just want to test the premise. So are, are we taking some of those projected? Demands for generation into account or are we looking at our projected demand based on just our current usage? And just projecting it for a population? Makes sense?
Yeah. So I think you're asking the question. So today we've had a peak of a hundred and thirty eight. And we're saying we're going to peak at a hundred and sixty. And you're saying, well, have you taken into account AI? Have you taken into account data centers and things like that? The good and the bad to that is, is Ames isn't well suited for a data center. Data centers are two hundred megawatts or greater. Ames as a utility couldn't support something like that, nor do we have the land in our own footprint. What we're looking at is basically our own growth. You know, it's the Sci-Town. It's the link. It is. Mary Greeley Medical Center expanding with theirs. New housing that's being proposed on Ontario. It's things like that that will, will have us reach up to that one sixty.
So in other words, we're, we're more insulated in some ways. From some of those national trends because we're, our model is just based on our, our current growth projections. And that we're not worrying about some of those other factors that are affecting. Generation nationally. Am I saying that correctly?
And we're sort of, we're landlocked, basically. We do not have a lot of, of area. Within the Ames electric system that we can continue to grow. A lot of the housing is into the co-ops. A lot of the housing is into Alliant. So that's why our projections aren't rocketing up. That's not to say that we don't hit a hundred and seventy as opposed to a hundred and sixty. But again, this strategy works so well for us that it's almost like, okay, art, we're growing faster. Let's size this with a twenty megawatt unit instead of a fifteen megawatt unit, or let's pick a twenty seven and get that additional bandwidth or put in another unit. And we're prepared to adjust. I will say in real time, but within a couple of years to meet that, that faster demand.
Thank you for answering these questions.
This is my last slide. So you may recall during the budgeting process, we had projected a one and a half percent increase. For electric rates over the next five years. And that was with the intention of making a fifty million dollar investment in a renewable energy source in FY twenty eight, twenty nine. So I think our recommendation at this point would be to continue to analyze those rate projections and make sure that we're on course. To at least be able to, to make that investment if the council should so choose or to provide additional flexibility should we find a. Interest rate environment that isn't favorable in this generation or we have cost estimates significantly higher than originally anticipated. And so I think our, our continued recommendation would be to continue those one and a half percent rate increases that. Our, our consultant that helped perform our rate analysis recommended. And then I think one, the last thing for me is, I, I think it's fair to point out that fuel cost increases are reflected in our energy rate adjustment or ECA, too. And so I think one thing we want to talk about or just make the council aware is, is that if fuel costs go up, natural gas prices go up. We're, we're still going to project a one and a half percent rate increase, but the impact on the end customer could be more significant. And, you know, we're a subject just to market conditions, just like everybody else. And so just wanted to point that out as we recommend rate increases and start looking at the financial condition of utility. Those, those MISO purchases and fuel costs still play a part in that.
The other question that came up on the June seventeenth meeting was, hey, I know you want to put it in the coal yard. But how about if you look at other sites? So staff sat down and talked through this and, and. Something to think about. So the things that we need for a good site, we would have to build a substation. That's going to cost roughly five million. That's beyond the eighty four. We would need access to our transmission system. So we.
This is if you did not use a coal yard.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd have to access the transmission system. In other words, part of the benefit of having this generation in and around the, the greater Ames area. Is for that reliability. The mayor brought up, you know, the derecho. We don't want to put it down in Ankeny. And then have to try to, you know, transport it up here or anything like that. So access transmission is important. We factor that in roughly, again, these are engineer estimates, so don't hold us to it, but about a million dollars a mile. And we think we're, we're probably be looking at a site five miles outside of the downtown area. We would need access to natural gas and not just a standard pipe, but we need high pressure natural gas. And we'll take it high flow rates to build a pipeline like that. If we look at the cost that we paid to help build the line that goes by the plant today. It's about a million dollars a mile, five plus miles, plus there was a million dollar connection cost. And then we'd have to find at least eight acres of land to put all of the equipment on and we figured roughly that's half a, half a million dollars. So these are the components above that eighty four that we would have to kind of consider as part of the budget.
So what is, what is the size of the coal yard?
It's about eight acre, eight acres.
And is that big enough for all of the?
All six.
All six, but is it, are we capped out at that point?
It depends if we're able to use the land to the south that Resource Recovery is continuing, is currently using.
Which will be all part of their analysis and preliminary design.
Yeah. So speaking to the, the coal yard, so that's roughly seventeen million plus that, that we're saving going into the coal yard. Now, looking at the other items that. Were concerned or that were, were talked about, the sound obviously is a concern. I mean, it's an industrial atmosphere. We're generating electricity. And so we looked into that and what's capable. There are a number of, of sites throughout the US, even within the Midwest. State neighboring to us, that the sound was a very big issue and you could actually throw a baseball, I'm not a very. Far thrower, but you could throw a baseball and hit a, a residential house from their site. And so they've, there's already some pretty great practices in place that engineers have put together to make sure that the sound is within reason. And so we're currently performing a sound study right now to understand the current environment and the conditions. And our aim is to maintain those current conditions. Also, we want to design, we want this to not be where we have to hide it. We want it to be something that we're proud of. Within our city. And so we want it to be designed where we can accept tours, have interaction. And so we want that to be a welcome site. And so we do plan on incorporating that into our design. And even having curb appeal, we want neighbors to be able to be attracted to come to that area and walk by on the sidewalk and, and those things. And so those are definitely within the design parameters that we'll be talking about with, with our engineering firm. It is a lot easier not having coal and not having trash. Not that those are bad things, but those are just dirty, messy things. And so it's just a lot easier to, and a simpler task to keep the site clean without those two elements.
So what other component, go ahead.
What is the issue of low vibrations that you mentioned? Because that doesn't sound good to me either. I don't like the idea of the, the noise. I don't like the idea of the vibrations.
That's right. Yeah, good question. So. I would say, so these engines run at a very low RPM. And so normally when you're traveling in your car at, on the interstate speed, you're around two thousand, twenty five hundred RPM, two thousand five hundred RPM. These run around five hundred RPM. And so it's pretty amazing how low. And so there's this kind of this low rumble. As, you know, three hundred tons of, of machine is, is continuing to push out so much power. And so there's two considerations. There is a high vibr, high frequency that needs to be understood. And sound attenuation needs to put, be put in place. But then the foundations need to be cared for as well to make sure that that low, that vibration isn't traveling through. The ground, through the building and the infrastructure to outside neighbors.
That, that just really worries me when we've got such an old main street where we're already having facades. That are damaged by age and, and as I understand it, damage affects that. We used to have a streetcar. Running down the middle of Main Street, which created vibrations, which damaged the facades. So, yeah, I'm, I'm the one who suggested moving this thing. And I, I still am not absolutely convinced that keeping it here is worth. You know, however, many decades in the future that we may be subjecting downtown to that, but.
I, I would say that having been to a number of these facilities that you would, you would, you should. You'd most likely feel much more of the trains going by than you would from these operating, standing next to them. So I think we can work with those, but those are definitely things that we need to be aware of to respect the neighboring community. So we want to do that from the very beginning.
Which goes again to the point of hiring a design firm. That knows what it's doing and understands all the impacts and does in foundation and isolation design. To try and express the concern that Glory just talked about. And say, this is a criteria and that they understand that. But the point is they know. They should be knowing what's going on regarding that, correct?
And we did spend a lot of time talking about sound attenuation and what we desire in this particular site. Told them that we are performing a, an ambient sound study right now and we're going to provide that data.
About vibration attenuation.
We didn't talk specifically about vibration, but that will be another component that will definitely be. will definitely be bringing up at the kickoff meeting.
And while we're thinking about worst case scenarios, I'm also concerned about security for this. So I like the idea of having some curb appeal, but I also want to make sure that this facility is protected. And let's say something really bad happens and there's some kind of explosion in this facility. Tell us about just sort of the the thought process in in containing the the damage from some kind of explosion. This is a lot of gas coming in. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, there there are a number of different design.
We can answer that question. I think we're starting to get into some of the details that you'll probably be talking about with in some of the design pieces. And we still have a lot of things on our agenda to go through.
And I don't need to know the specific details. I just want to know that these things are being considered. I I apologize if I frame that like I I need those details. But we build a facility like this, I want to know it's safe, both for the neighborhood and the businesses. And I want to know that we're taking steps to protect protect that asset from any bad actors.
Yes. Yeah, we'll definitely talk about that more with the engineer as well because they can speak from with a lot more experience in the design components. But that'll definitely be something that we continue to push.
Yep, that's great. That's all I need. Thanks.
So I think that is our last slide, but just in summary, we we based on our citing studies we've performed, we still believe that the coal yard is a good is the best site for this and just continuing to pay attention to the things that you guys have brought up. Hopefully, we've answered your questions around the impacts of the rates. And then as well as just the engineering services, just asking for your approval to negotiate a contract with Sergeant Lundy.
So the only question regarding site is, does their scope of services include evaluating other sites? Or is it just presuming that it's being located on the coal yard? And that might affect the fee?
It currently does not include looking at other sites. They'll be looking at the design on the specific site right now at the coal yard and help us understand if there's big concerns that we have not looked at yet.
So the point is that if councils is interested in evaluating their site, which has to happen pretty quickly because you got a lot of stuff going on. Is that something that council wants to get an idea what that cost might be from Sergeant and Lundy? Is that see what I'm saying? Is that you're in the negotiating stage, right? Or negotiating an agreement? If that's something that council want is expecting, because right now that's not in the cards.
That's great.
And if I could just at the coal yard one more time, the there's a high pressure gas line that runs through it. So that's already there. We just tapped into it and we already that we own a portion of it, but we've already paid for that. So we paid for that as part of the unit eight, unit seven conversion. We need to tie into a major substation. Ames Plant Substation is just across the tracks on the north side. So we don't even have to build a substation to do this. From a transmission standpoint, again, we're going right from the generation right into the power plant. So no transmission costs and we own the land. If if we don't use that land, I'm not sure what value it would have to develop because it's covered in coal and dirt.
And I I'm with Gloria on this. I if if all things are equal, I'd like it to be somewhere else. But I think you made some really compelling points about its location. I assume also these units can come in by train, by rail cars. I assume that would be another advantage for its location there, just in terms of ease of bringing the equipment in.
Well, go back to your numbers, $17 million to move it farther away. Add that to the 84, they're already at over 100 million. Then you're starting to creep up into the point where rates may have to go up because this project cost is going to go up. And we haven't even factored in two years worth of inflation on project install and whatever. So the point is, you were asking about what the project cost is, how close is it is? It could certainly creep up well north of $100 million if we are going to move it away. But the point is we have to just go in with our eyes wide open regarding that. It's just there's there's other costs have to go into it. And Alliance can have to have advanced notice and then put a high pressure gas line in and get that scheduled as well, too.
That's a very good point.
So I just, you know, throw that, you know, out. There's a lot of not to be said in terms of economics, rate structure, as well as expediency of getting this going.
I would say that I think the last time you all were sitting here talking to us and I asked about this other sighting. Don, I believe you said these units were movable. They don't sound like they can be moved once they're in place.
Yeah, I think hopefully I was talking about the backup generation for the power plant. We're looking at, you know, 250 KW on wheel generators, but no, these will be permanently installed.
Okay. So two questions. One is, is there an interest or desire on council's part to consider or have them consider other sites or not? Because this is a decision point because it's going to enter into the fee structure and a lot of other factors. And if you're if we're okay staying at the coal site, that's a decision you make that we put that tried that stake in the ground and move forward. But I think it's important and that has to be answered tonight. Do you want to explore other sites besides the coal yard?
I'm in favor of exploring other sites because I think this locks the future of Ames downtown in for the next, I don't know, 50 years, 80 years, however long those rice units will last, right? Because we're we're known for making our machinery hang on, right? So do we really want to lock it in? Or do we want to invest now? And or at least invest in looking at something else now when we can? Because we won't be able to once we build this.
I I agree with you. The incremental cost of looking at locations. I am skeptical that there's anywhere anywhere close to Ames. I mean, all of us have a good sense of our footprint. I don't want this in my backyard. I don't know about you. So there's there's just not a lot of locations where you could drop this bad boy. I'm skeptical, but I think the incremental cost is negligible in the big scheme of things. I would I would be in favor of looking at locations, even though I'm skeptical.
Yeah, I doubt that we're going to find anything that meets our needs, but I I think we should look seriously at it.
I think it's fair.
Which is not to say you haven't looked seriously at it, but from an engineering perspective, you know, that that's a different kind of assessment.
Part of our due diligence.
Help us to understand. So, I mean, we're going to look at the criteria that we've laid out there and we're going to say, okay, we either we need to be on a gas line. To be on a gas line, it's going to be somewhere between Lincoln Way and Barilla. That's the land we can look at. Anywhere along there, then we've got to build transmission. So we're going to have high voltage, another high voltage transmission line, maybe two running down Lincoln Way to get us back to Ames Plant. Or we got to go to to Dayton. That substation is too small, so then we'll expand the Dayton substation. I don't know where we go there. So help help us understand. I mean, is it you want it outside of city limits or?
What's the criteria?
Yeah, help us, I mean, because I because I understand generation downtown is kind of one of those, you know, it's downtown. Let's move it outside of downtown. But that's also our load center and that's how our transmission system has been developed is to serve downtown load. So I I would love some help in telling us what I mean. I don't.
Away from Main Street. I mean, that's that's basically it. I mean, if you can move it to to someplace toward Dayton Road, that's still an improvement because it's away from the end of Main Street where people are living and working. And I
But so I'm I'm hearing what I'm hearing you say, Don, is that there's just physical limitations. I mean, there there are so that we're balancing, right? So I appreciate Gloria's point, but there are limit- there are engineering limitations of where we could place this in our current footprint. And so it's it's your opinion to us that we don't have a location within our footprint of Ames and we're looking at locating it outside and then moving, making all the logistics happen to bring the energy in. Is that am I saying that correctly?
Yeah. And then, you know, what cost is that? So as the mayor pointed out, coming back and saying, okay, we can move it to next to Barilla, but it's going to cost $24 million extra or something, you know, like that.
So if we know, so that's the question, Gloria. So if we know going into it that there really aren't any options that aren't less than 25 million, are you still interested in that?
I 25 million now.
Know what the, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we're locking in the destiny of downtown Ames for the next 80 years, yeah, I think we should know now what it what is possible. And maybe what's advisable, right?
So is that something that you need? Would need Sergeant and Lundy to help? Or is that something that you believe that your staff could go through and look at? You know, an overall looking at, you know, beacon map and knowing what the other factors are, knowing where the substations are, that you could essentially do your own internal analysis while while this contract is being negotiated. And then you could respond back to council, put on the next agenda, say, here's what we did. Here's we looked at, these are thumbprint. These are quick thumbnail sketches. Because you know, you need to have at least eight to 10 acres, right?
Yes.
And you know, there's certain criteria and you're trying to be given the different options and then just doing some ballpark. I'm just I'm thinking, is that would that?
Well, they've already done that. We, you know.
Yeah, what what we presented tonight was was us was the results of us doing that. We didn't, we we did not speak to landowners. We just made some assumptions that we'd be able to. But other than speaking to landowners, that tonight was our results.
I'm not trying to kill this proposal. I just want to emphasize, I don't think we should sign an agreement with Sergeant and Lundy until you've decided on the site.
Yeah.
Because that in fairness, that may change the even for their work. Design is going to be all different. So you can't get them going on a design unless they have the site.
Because you got the engineer connections, you got the engineer other things.
We can hire them. That's got to be like the first step before we sign the agreement on the actual all the other stuff. Because I guarantee it's a different site will lead to different.
Yeah, because you got just got a substation design.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, but
I'm not against it. I just want you to know, we have to do that first.
Theoretically, I'm using that a lot tonight. Theoretically, if we move it away from Main Street, it helps with issues like the sound or the the vibration. So some of the engineering may not need to be as substantial or as.
I wouldn't, I would disagree. I would think that no matter where you're going to put it, you're still going to be taking kind of acoustics vibration because it could be if you have a Barilla, they're going to be concerned about vibration on their equipment, for example. If you're going to buy somebody else of manufacturing, you know, hot chemical, they're going to have. So the point is, is I think it's going to have to, that's not going to go away essentially. So that mean, this is a watershed moment right now. We got to make a decision because we got to decide if I want to move forward. Because there's no turning back, so to speak, after it.
I just can't get past that. This is how we've always done and locked ourselves in is a good argument for not investing in something different. That's
Is is there a threshold as we look at other sites? And that's again, we didn't look at specific sites, but we looked at the cost components of each of those. If we came back and said, okay, it's going to be 17 million, how do we? I mean, let's assume tonight we came and said, okay, it's 17 million more to move it out of the city. Is that? Is that too too big of a price? I I'm I'm not sure what to do with the information. So we could come back in two weeks and say, okay, we think we found a site. It's going to be $20 million. And then it's, yep, no, or are we?
That was my assumption.
Okay.
Your assumption was what?
That whatever they came back with, we would assess whether it is worth the investment to move the plant there or not. And, you know, to be honest, I hear a lot from residents who don't like where our electric services plant is now. And so I maybe there are lots of residents who would gladly have their rates go up a bit so that we can move that thing. I don't know.
Well, bear bear in mind, we say move that thing. We're still going to have the current power plant there for at least 10, 15, 20 years and maybe even longer. And the cost to demolish that is going to be significant. And you have infrastructure in there that has to tie into the grid system. So that is not going to be an inexpensive proposition. So moving the generation plant someplace else is not going to resolve the fact that we're still going to have a power plant as the east anchor to Main Street for a long period of time.
Well, a shorter period of time than two generations, you know, that's that's all I'm saying. I really just want to see what's there because if we don't consider it, I think we're being remiss in looking at this opportunity because we aren't going to have this opportunity once those rice units go in.
But I can bet Don was trying to say when we were trying to position the swimming pool, like we said, it had to be on a side ride route. It had to be in downtown. So is there any criteria other than find a side off of Main Street? That's a lot for the consultant look about you're saying, anything goes inside the city, outside the city. You don't have any, just off of Main Street is the only never one criteria.
I want it out of downtown and preferably away from residential areas.
Okay, well, that's
I mean, that's
The residential, whether it's farmsteads or anything like that.
Well, I assume we're going to have to buy property wherever we go, so.
No, residential, it could be near farmsteads, people living in those places. It's if it's out of downtown, it's out in the eastern part of town, you know, outside of.
You're just trying to complicate this, aren't you, Steve?
No, I don't want to spend $300,000 and not satisfy you. That's all I'm saying.
I again, we're not going to I don't want it near urban residential or the end of Main Street. And, you know, it seems like you have a pretty good idea of the kinds of places that it could be located. So this doesn't seem like a a difficult thing to assess the the best location out of the few choices that we might have.
So if we go ahead with that, I I don't think you'd feel comfortable with what they gave right now because it's general cost. You want us to hire the consultant to do that probably then, right? So I'm hearing.
Depends how much that consultant is going to charge us. If it was part of the contract, that was one thing. But if you're saying we've got to have the assessment first.
Yeah, I wouldn't sign the contract with them at all. This would be a an addendum just to do this first. You've got to get this over with.
Staff feels that they know what the requirements are going to be. For putting those rice units somewhere other than where we find at the end of Main Street with the coal yard. You know, if there are geologic features or those kinds of concerns that you don't feel you can assess, then I guess we would have to be going with a consultant on it. If you feel that you are adequately versed in the sort of stability of the terrain that would be necessary for these things.
Yeah, I I think our number would be a ballpark number. I mean, we're not going to, if you start getting into stability of the grounds, you're talking $300,000 just to study that. And if you're talking literally, okay, the it's not a flood, not flood plain, but we can, we can give you a high level estimate on what it would cost.
Is that enough for other council members?
Good enough for credibility or do you want a third party as as we're asking?
I think a high level estimate is fine. And if we could look at what that would do to rates, like an extra, yeah, $20 million on the project. I think that'd be a helpful decision.
And the other thing, we could pick a site that we don't own. And again, I wouldn't want to start hiring the consultant to develop. But it's like, we now have control of the our our three, you know, our our new site that for the garbage, right? Reviews. So now we can bring the consultant in and design for that particular site. So I'm just telling you, there's another step that we have to have in there. It's not bad. We just want to make sure we get that right.
Comment on the schedule because the point is, we already own and control a site. That's so you can start working right away. It's taken us three, four, five months to go ahead and go through the process of finding a site for the new recent, the new transfer station and doing preliminary assessment, the whole nine yards. So I think it's reasonable to assume you're going to probably add at least four to six months. So for property acquisition. So how would that affect, how would that affect the schedule, everything else?
So part of the schedule right now, based on what Sergeant Lundy showed us, is we would have these units in service in May of 2028, which means they would be available for the summer season. Okay, which is something we're looking at because let's assume unit seven gets through 2027 and it's not, they're not even here. So worst case on seven and we have the capacity for summer 2028. So worst case on seven, and we have the capacity for summer twenty twenty eight. If seven, if, if we delay it, so we miss the summer season, we could end up spending four million dollars in replacement capacity with myself. So our, our timing right now is just trying to get these units in for the twenty twenty eight summer season. Taking that off the table, um, we have a, I think we need, so we need to get the engineering firm on board, which will be the, they need to help us with, and, and this is less site specific with permitting, somewhat site specific, but we're still gonna have to order transformers. We're still gonna have to specify the units and that's agnostic to the site. We gotta, we have to order equipment before Christmas, no matter what site we're on. So we're in, that's the timing that we have to get through. So I, I understand what Steve is saying, that we don't wanna sign a contract with an engineering firm. But at the same time, there are components that are not site specific, that we need their involvement and impact and, and, and starting on that within the next thirty days, if we can. If it makes sense, I'm not.
Well, then the best thing is, would you trust staff to come up with this analysis and just do the best we can?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we need to do it quicker, obviously, and but we, we have credibility, because it's gonna be high level estimates. You're gonna pick a spot and you're gonna assume some costs or we can even get it, control of the land. We're gonna make assumptions, right?
And then I think if we hire an engineer, it won't be quick and it still will be, well.
Right.
It's, it's, we know our system as well as an engineer will in terms of cost per mile, in terms of substation costs.
Yeah. So I think what we could do is we can go after maybe three or four specific sites that are away from Main Street and hopefully away from residential areas. And then we'll, we'll analyze those specific sites and say, okay, um, maybe talk to landowners, see if there's interest or just understanding the site and then we can talk to Alliant and, and see if we can get some sort, some of those, those prices.
Do you need a, a motion on this here?
Yeah, I, I was just, yeah, yes, we, absolutely. Um, are you clear enough on the scope of work with Sergeant Lundie that if a site changed, you would know what would need to be added to their contract to get additional fee quote? Because there's gonna be a significant, there could be a significant price increase in a change order that are agreement, because it, I'm making this up. They're not planning on designing a new substation.
Correct.
That would have to be added to their contract. Someone's got to design the high voltage lines coming back to downtown, which is additional visual overhead. But that's would be added to their contract. There's other things that would have to be added to their contract.
Gas line.
Gas lighting?
Gas line.
Oh, gas line. Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, because the point is, if, if you assign an agreement now, it's on the understanding that you have a clear scope of what would have to be added in the future and counseling you here that that could be, it could be seven figures.
Could you go back one slide to like the request of motion? Or I guess it was. Yeah, cause it was still to negotiate an agreement. It isn't a ward of contract. So wouldn't there be room to do this, even if we went with that?
Well, you could even, you can negotiate the contract for that particular amount. As I'm saying, if the scope is very specific, they start going and what Don was saying about in terms of doing the, then you're gonna have a.
Change order.
A change, or you're saying you would negotiate a fee at this point in time. But the point is, you may not have to, maybe a site's not, so your site isn't.
So that, that part wasn't clear to me, Don. When the RFP was done, was it done with this particular site in mind?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The coal yard.
It wasn't to evaluate a variety of sites.
But it, but it was, it was an RFP for this specific site?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, what we could do is we can negotiate the contract as if we're gonna build it in the coal yard. And then, then we have the ability to bring them on and help us get the equipment going. And then, and talk with them about what the estimates would be if they entertained an additional scope for the design of the substation and other things. And they can give us that quote if that is something that we decide to go down and we can make that decision after the fact, but it would be a change order.
Yep.
Well, you're only asking a certain part of it.
First number, and if you wanna continue with that, then we would initiate, initiate a change order to.
That's definitely gonna happen though. It's definitely gonna happen. How long will it take you to do this start analysis?
We're gonna have it done before the next council meeting.
Yeah.
Well, and the point is, if that's.
I feel more comfortable. Can we do that?
Well, yes, we're working on those and it's gonna take some time to work through the details on the contract as well too. So that's not gonna happen.
Um, we might have to have a special meeting of the contract. We've gotta come back and show you this. I believe you got us locked into the site.
Like, like into the site.
Yeah.
Into a site.
Yeah, to a site. And if that's gonna be based on their analysis, then by next council meeting, they'll have that analysis for you. We might not sign that agreement right then, but it could be two days later. You know, I will know what the site is. Because if it's a different site, we're gonna have to know what that additional cost is to finalize that agreement. I just think we gotta do that.
So timing wise, we can do that?
Well, they don't wanna do that, but you wanna get that information. That's what we.
But just from, just, I, I don't understand the logistics of the timing. So if we just move this back, we wouldn't have to have this extensive discussion in the next meeting, obviously. So could we move this to the next meeting and accomplish both those goals?
Well, yeah, I, I think, my opinion, one is you need two motions, in my opinion. One is if you want to go ahead and explore other sites, have staff do it. That's one motion. And two is, I do believe it's important to allow staff to start working on negotiating an agreement. You could enter into a, a discussion with them saying, hey, councils asked for this. Would you start pushing some numbers around approximate? If we had to do this, this and this, what would that might be? So we can drop that into the overall cost, additional cost to, to move it. But then at least you got this engine, pardon the pun, but the engine moving already to try and get this equipment, cause you said that the equipment is site agnostic.
Yes, cause, and we have to negotiate the contract and there are Ts and Cs and things that we can be working on today till.
That are immaterial to the, to the site.
Correct.
Okay. So is there a motion? To Cory, you said, do, do you need a motion? Do you wanna make a motion?
I would move that we ask staff to assess other sites that might be possible locations for the units.
For the power plant.
For the power plant. That are away from downtown and away from urban residential.
Urban and residential or just urban?
Urban residential.
And how about residential in general?
What's that?
How about just residential in general?
Well, Steve was asking about farms.
Well, I gotta be careful. We cited a sewer plant once and it was very controversial with our, our, our sewer plant. So you, you were just, you're not worried about, you're just by urban.
I'm.
Urban residential.
Urban residential.
Okay.
And what was the other component? Now you made me forget it. Um.
It's my fault.
Oh, and get a, I don't wanna use the term ballpark, high level um, assessment of costs and what that would do to the rates.
Okay.
If we selected this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait, why don't you just say, and we want to bring that back by, what's three weeks? What's the next council meeting?
April, August twelfth.
Is that possible?
We'll make it happen.
Okay. How about that? That puts pressure on us to get it done by that time.
By August twelfth.
Yep.
Bring it back by August twelfth.
Okay. All right. And there's a second. You're okay with this? Right. Does the fair of the motion say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carried. Is there, is there a motion directing staff to negotiate, to work on negotiating an agreement with Sergeant Lundie?
So to clarify, John, is the alternative is to ward a contract? So is it to negotiate or ward a contract?
No, we're not ready. We, we've looked it over and we think there should be some changes to the agreement. So we're not, you'll see this twice on the agenda. So it's just to tell us to negotiate. We gotta bring back the contract.
I move that we begin negotiation with Sergeant and Lundie.
Second.
Okay.
Well, by the way, the way it reads now, the cost not to exceed, but that's based on the, on the current site. So I guess you don't wanna say that, right? All right. It's complex. We could do it just to negotiate it. It'll be based on what the.
I would, yeah, because the point is, you've already got them.
Yeah, we locked into the current site, but not any new site.
Right. All right. Does the fair of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm thirty four, shared use path system expansion program update.
Thanks for staying late.
Breakfast.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Justin Clausen, Public Works Director. I have Damian Pregatser, Traffic Engineering Manager, and Mark Ganson, uh, Civil Engineer in the Traffic Division as well with us. Uh, tonight, we wanna talk real briefly about, um, some of our shared use paths system programs and specifically, um, a, a path along the Skunk River Trail between East Lincoln Way and Southeast Sixteenth. Uh, we've been working with a property owner along there for several years to try to get either property acquired or easement, um, temporary or permitting, excuse me, to, to construct this trail. Um, as part of that, um, the beneficial, the, the alignment that we're talking about is very beneficial along the western edge of the Skunk River, because we have a pedestrian bridge that we were able to salvage from the Grand Avenue extension that would cross Iowa Creek and complete that connection there. So as Mark's bringing up the, uh, the maps here, um, we'll, we'll talk to that real quick. Um, in twenty, December of twenty twenty four, we met with the property owners, went through the alignment that we talked about, specifically talked about, um, where it would be, what it would look like, um, how would it impact their, their farm ground? We thought at that time that we were making some progress, but in the past six months or so, we've had very little progress to the point where we don't believe that we can probably find an agreement with them, um, with the current property owners as is. Um, we have offered to get appraisals to purchase the land. We have offered to tie in a project on the Skunk River as well to try to stop the bank erosion that is impacting their property. And all these are met with, um, uh, a little bit of pushback and I, I don't think we're to the point where we're probably gonna get something put together with them. Um, the, the real thing that I believe they want to have is they want to turn this property over to the next generation of, um, their families in the, in whole, without any land being sold or any easements on it. So hearing that from them kind of just give us pause. And so we wanted to come back here to council and kinda get your input on what our priority should be for this connection. And it has some impacts on other connections as well throughout the, the trail, uh, system. So before we get into, um, some of the options, I do wanna point out, um, some of the other impacts that this could have. We currently have a project programmed, um, probably for construction in twenty twenty six. On the right-hand side of the screen there, it's on South Dayton Avenue. There's currently no connection between East Lincoln Way and Southeast Sixteenth on the east side of town. This project will provide that connection. So it may take a little bit of pressure off the area while it's not maybe the ideal connection that we want. There will be a connection in that area to get between East Lincoln Way and South Sixteenth. Um, if we, if council decides to choose to look at a, a option to maybe delay or do something different, um, with the alignment in this area, we'd also look at some projects such as, um, the South Fourth Pedestrian Bridge, where we're trying to expand some, um, connectivity along there. That project is being underfunded because the pedestrian bridge itself has come in three times more than what we initially planned for. And then the, the different realignment, we could take the bridge that we had planned on for the, um, the crossing there on the, on the river alignment and possibly move it up to the Moore Park and help push that project ahead a little quicker too. So we wanna present some options to you and, and get some feedback. So some other, other options that we have to look at is we could look at the, um, well, well road alignment, excuse me, um, that extends south from East Lincoln Way down towards the wells, towards Iowa Creek. Now, this is challenging from a number of standpoints. Um, one of the main things there is there is farming activity that happens on both sides of the, the well road there. So we would have to work somehow to make sure we minimize those crossings and it wouldn't necessarily be ideal. Another thing that would happen there, we'd have to rework the easements that we have over that roadway to allow us to have, um, the bicycle traffic in that area as well. Um, one other thing that we could do with the, the South Dayton Trail going in place, we could look at just taking a step back, give the property owner time to, to sit on things. We could wait till the property owner, property changes hands even. Um, and in doing so, we could utilize that South Dayton Trail. We could reprioritize some of this funding, um, to get some of these other priorities done. So we wanna present those to you tonight, wanna open up to discussion for, from you and, and get some feedback and answer any questions you may have on those.
Can you comment on, have you walked that area, the, the, the area along where we had proposed doing the surf, I call it the surf machine, the red, the proposed red line trail? Have you, have you walked that area?
Mark and Damian, they, they walked it with the property owner.
And is it, is it developable beyond just doing a trail for other features that could be put in there long-term? This is a long-term vision, not just, or is it pretty much just? It's not really gonna be that.
Do you have any examples? It is an active floodway, uh, which would certainly limit the ability to, to add features to that. Um, the, the vast majority of this is floodway. Floodway fringe extends beyond that a bit, but, um, pretty much one hundred percent of the trail would be in, in an active floodway. So if you, you look at where the, the, the river goes underneath Lincoln Way. You take that point and you can draw, you can actually see the corner of Wal- uh, Walmart, like the southeast corner has been notched for the floodway. So if you draw a line from the southeast corner of Walmart too, where the river goes underneath Lincoln Way, that is all like what Mark was saying is active floodway. And so, uh, usually anything that would go in there, you know, a shelter, a bench, anything, yeah, it just catches debris. So.
I, I wasn't really clear. I was thinking more about just, you know, places where people could just, you know, gather that wouldn't have built structure, maybe it have some paving or might have some natural landscaping or some larger, I'm just thinking, you know.
We have talked extensively, even with the property owner, that some of the areas around that trail would be open for some green spaces.
Right.
Maybe some other things that could be in there. Um, but again, none of those ideas really kinda got us in a headway towards an easement or any of the things that Justin was talking about.
This is really an unfortunate situation because the, um, ideally I would love to go from A to Hayden on shared use, use trail all the way down to South Sixteenth. And we've, we've, we've had, we've hit, um, headwinds to the north of Innes Grove. It's really unfortunate and, um, we are limited. We can't use eminent domain, is my understanding.
Correct.
To make this happen. So, um, maybe at some point, uh, and I don't mean to put pressure on these farmers, but this seems like a really non-impactful aspect of their property and it would be such a community enhancement to be able to take the drug. I run that trail all the time. It's my favorite trail in Ames. Um, but could you take us over to the, the, the trail that goes underneath South Duff? I don't know if we have a name for it, but could you look at that? There's another attachment on the materials. That looks at the well.
The Iowa Creek Trail that goes underneath South Duff there, the east to west.
Yep. Do you have a map where it shows the well field? And I don't know what happened in this project, but somehow when this was designed, and correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, but we didn't, um, we basically built a trail that ends because we don't have the ability to go anywhere else now. Um, we have an existing, could you, I'm not sure that's the right one. Um, you know, talking about that shows the.
Yeah, it's, it's the red line on the map that goes just west of the yellow, which is the trail we're talking about.
Is there a way to bring this up to zoom in a little bit to show people what this is about? So if you, if you know where the UPS store is, that's that gravel road that runs straight south of there is, is we have a, uh, an easement that connects with the well, the well fields, but it all are shared use path tees into that.
Right.
So if we were able to gain, to, to modify the well access easement to a, make it a shared use path, then all we're doing is taking a gravel road and just adding a small, it's not that big, couple of blocks of pavement or blacktop to connect Lincoln Way to that trail. trail. That's a game changer because it connects the East River Valley Trail System with the entire rest of our trail system. So this is literally the missing link. So we have to figure out how to do this. I don't want people to feel like they're trespassing on on that connection. We have to find a way to make that happen.
Well, I would say let, so Mark and I, when we looked at the project and talking with the owner, talking with our engineering team, to make the trail and to make the access road, the gravel road, open to the public in an accessible way that meets standards is more than, I think, what we're describing tonight. Just, just making illegal access to cross it isn't enough because we can't direct trail users down a road that has, I don't know what WPC might bring down there as far as equipment, but for sure farm equipment that goes on that actively, they have to be delineated. We can't have trail users, all all abilities, all ages. They cannot intermingle with like farm equipment and other things without consideration. They can't be on a trail that doesn't meet certain accessibility standards. So I think that's what what Mark had put in the in the report was that there is engineering. So there's more than just the access and more than the legal rights. There are engineering challenges that have to coincide with this.
Well, why did we build this trail then?
Well, what what I can tell you
It literally ends in the middle of nowhere.
Well, I was around when we did the, because so this whole trail plan, as you know, has been in our in our master planning for a while. It was in the first long range plan the city, the MPO and the city has ever had. This is probably the most unique land owner I have run into. What Justin is saying is right. They have a vision of transferring the property, any appeal to like coming up with a business price, like like a market value, any appeal to any kind that would break up the land or change it from the current state that their her father gave to them. She wants to keep it in kind of like almost a peer state and transfer it to the next generation. And so that's why we're coming here tonight because it's very hard with the mechanisms that we would typically apply to any other landowner, just doesn't appeal to this landowner. And the master plan up until we hit this landowner, I think, like we described in the north, we've had other landowners that just don't want to talk to us. But up until this point, everything was going, like all the other trail connections you see on this map, we would go, we would get an easement, we build the trail, move on to the next segment. So there was no reason, no cause to change our planning or try to make major changes to that alignment. We just hit kind of an impasse on this one segment.
Okay, what if we moved, it's late, and maybe I'm crazy, but if we move that access further to the west and just say, look, we're just not going to deal with this farmer. We've got Cherry, that's a street. Could we punch that through and somehow connect with that trail?
Did you want to talk through the options that we've looked at?
Yeah, there there's several options. So Cherry, council's familiar with a previous project that explored an extension there. There's an ability for an extension to happen in some other locations. All of that's obviously dependent on how that land develops. And maybe that's part of the, an option that we could pursue where the north side, we don't have a great option right now, but the south side perhaps is a little different. And we can eliminate the dead end of the Iowa Creek Trail and really prioritize getting it south to the trailhead on Southeast Sixteenth Street. We give the north side a little more time, whether it be a river alignment with the same property owners, a change in ownership there, something changes with the well access road, or we have another development to the west of the well access road that would facilitate a north south connection up to Lincoln Way. I think that might be a direction that that we could discuss.
Yeah, I think what what we're looking for tonight is is obviously moving off the west side of River Connection, which is obviously the most desired place. We want to make sure that you're involved in that decision and making sure we're getting some priorities from you. If we do move off that, as Mark had said, we would look at making that trail that dead ends, we would look to prioritize the crossing to the south right there to get it tied into Southeast Sixteen. And at the same time, we could look at alternative alignments for this trail going to the north. But in doing so, we would have to reprioritize that in the CIP in, say, this fall, and look at where can we find this next next segment, this next alignment to make sure we can try to get that connection, still continue to work towards it. But it may just may not be in the preferred location, which is right next to the river.
It doesn't seem very good use of staff time to continue beating our heads against the wall, trying, what, everything again to to acquire that access. So I would be in favor of the Dayton Road Connection as a means of providing that connection for the time being and then, you know, revisiting the the potential for the the Skunk River Trail.
No, it's just, yeah, I, it just seems that, you know, we don't have mountains, we don't have beaches, last time I checked. We have a river, and we have a river trail system down south that keeps coming north. Man, I just thought that this would be a tremendous opportunity to really showcase, maybe you have the opportunities to try and somehow, you know, connect into the river or have a, you know, another canoe, you know, launch area here and have it with the trails. They have some spots, some green areas that you talked about, you know, Damian. I agree with you, you don't want to have the, you don't have staff keep beating their heads, but the point is to go to a straight line trail. I appreciate you trying to give us some options, you know, as well, too. Just seems like, oh, man, I could have had a V eight, or I could have had, you know, something else a lot better, you know, in terms of long term. It's just
My suggestion is you'd want both of them. Isn't that the case? I mean,
Yeah, Dayton Road, yeah.
No, but I mean, the the river as well. It's just that we can't get that now, but we can do the Dayton Road now.
That's why you program though.
Yeah, Dayton, Dayton is already programmed. Dayton will be, we're in design of that currently. So that'll be next year's construction.
The question is, do you want to do one along the river, or you want to go further to the west and do just a straight north south shot along the well access? Is that right?
Yes. Or we can also, we can also pause on any north south connection there, take a breath and see if we can find an alternative alignment, as as Tim had mentioned, maybe even farther to the west with a different property owner, something that we, you know, we haven't spent a lot of time digging into it because we've really been trying to get that river riverside taken care of.
Does does the property owner own everything on the east side?
East, and I just checked. It's east and west.
Yes, they do.
Yeah. So kind of one of the things that made probably perhaps the most sense to address Tim's concern, the dead end has been an issue, and we know it's an issue. And I believe that, and I think we as a group believe that the connection of the end of Iowa Creek Trail east down and then get it across the river like Justin was talking about, and connect it down into essentially the Hundred Year Sports Trail Connection. That would make a loop to the south. And then we'd have Dayton that gives us a route to the north, and then see what we can do moving forward, but not have a fairly large CIP encumbrance that we know isn't going anywhere. I think that was one of our concerns is just like, we don't want to sit on a large amount of money and then knowing that it can't be spent, that money could be going to some other improvement. But we absolutely understand as an amenity for the town, for our trail network, we don't want to necessarily give up on the the river alignment. And these options don't. I don't think that precludes us from coming back and making a connection later, even albeit just slightly different because it would come off of a different point moving forward.
These are, these are different users who are going to use the South Dayton as opposed to the people who are going to be on the trail. I may just think it's important that we delineate that. And it's not a bad thing. And I think we take the long view of things, and we're doing the best we can with the options that we have. And the, when is the, could you remind us when it's programmed in the CIP now to do the South, South Dayton piece?
It's a twenty five, twenty six project. So it's current fiscal year. We're soliciting the design contract right now.
And remind us, would that be on the east or west side of the road?
We anticipate the east side of South Dayton. There's a current path coming up off the Southeast Sixteenth Street in front of the hotels that we would extend with that project up to East Lincoln Way.
Because then it's north of Thirteenth Street. It's on the the east side all the way up.
Could you show that on the map just for people? And while you're doing that, that South Sixteenth Trail is probably one of the nicest trails that we have in Ames. It's a beautiful, is it, is it twelve feet, is it ten feet concrete? It's concrete.
It's ten, I believe.
Ten, it's ten feet concrete, and it's beautiful, but it's it's underutilized because nobody can get to it. And so adding that South Dayton connection will really add a lot of utilization to that South Sixteenth Trail.
So Option Three mentions the possibility of diverting some of that Skunk River Trail local option sales tax to fully fund the South Fourth Street pedestrian bridge. Is there other money that can be put toward any other projects that are not currently programmed?
I'm not aware of maybe things that we aren't, aren't fully funded on right now other than than that one. Now, the other one I would look at possibly is at Moore Park with the bridge we have in place right now. We could look at if there's additional funding, could we accelerate that with some, I don't know, Keith's working on some of that right now, and we would work collectively with parks to say, maybe there's some opportunity for us to accelerate that connection, knowing we move some of that money around. We can maybe utilize both, you know, from from both directions there. But it's something, if there is, if there is some funding that we don't have priority for, we would come back during CIP time and maybe present you with some options to say, hey, we could do some of this as well.
Well, I think there'd be a whole lot more interest in connecting Moore Park with the Peggy's Trail area than than this. I mean, frankly, there are just so many more people that would use that.
So Option Three, would that also, I'm sorry, Mark, you're probably getting, I think we're ADD here. The B, the blue squiggle line you had shown on the other one, is that would Option Three include programming that? Or is that something that's not one of the options that council was given?
Option Two was a little more geared towards prioritizing extending Iowa Creek to the south and giving the north side a little more time, and also included the the reprioritization of some of the current money.
So possibly what we could do is if you looked at Option Two, we can engage some of the property owners and and just gauge their interest on, could we move this to the west? Is that possible to do here? And before we make any decisions, we can obviously come back to council and get some direction. Is that something you'd like to do?
If you move it west, Justin, would that mean we're abandoning the river?
That that will, we'd abandon it at this point in time. That's not to say that at some point in the future, if that property changes hands, if the proprietor comes back to us, we'd have to obviously prioritize or program funding for that. But there's there's nothing to preclude us from assembling that trail as well at some point in the future.
But you don't want to have, I mean,
If you do, if you move it further west, you would go like east of Walmart and west of this point? Is that what you're saying?
We would have to find that alignment, but probably somewhere in there.
But the point is, once you put that in, won't people say, well, why do you want another one going north south? You have to choose whether you're going to do the north south straight line, I call it straight line one, or you do the serpentine one along the river.
So may maybe, maybe if you do like Option Three, you could say that you would like us to prioritize that blue line to the south connecting the Iowa Creek Trail as well.
So Iowa, so the Iowa Creek doesn't dead end anymore. It tries to get down to the
Look at that as a priority with that. And we can, we can see what we can do with that.
And then push pause on the trying to pursue something going north and then let Dayton
Let Dayton develop.
That, I was just trying to clarify what's in the options. That was all.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
I just think from a cool, one of our things is, you know, having cool spaces and doing cool things in the city. I've always been intrigued by that, and I just hate to give that up. I just think that whether it's this council or a future council, they say, well, we already got a trail going north and south and a little farther to the west. Why do you want to do one? Again, we'll use that money someplace else. It just seemed like you could have an opportunity to try and, in the future, go at the property owner again. And again, and just sweeten the pot or just say, hey, we do this or this or whatever. So
But I think there's, there's kind of two elements that we've been discussing tonight. One is the the capital plan and the budgeting. And then the other piece is the overall planning for our trail network, which includes a combination of street, street alignments, and then obviously all of our green belt, kind of more recreational trails. I don't believe that there's any, you don't want redundant facilities for the sake of redundant facilities. But if you have a more street style alignment that makes a connection, and we can try to figure out, like we're saying, west, west of the river, that is a more street style connection, we can explore that so that there is a connection because we don't know the current landowner along the river, how long that would be. But it feels like it could be another ten plus years.
So could you clarify, I'm sorry, do I have to? Go ahead.
No, just the last thing I was going to say, that doesn't mean that in our plan, the trail plan, which includes illustrative, like kind of without money constraints, just like, how do we want the network to look, that we wouldn't keep this river alignment completion? Because there is, there is a connection at Lincoln Way and a connection down here. And then whenever that the hand exchange, sorry, whenever the land exchanges hands, you'd be able to then do a project there. And so I don't, if you looked at our trail map, there's a lot of trail connections that are in relatively close proximity to each other. This wouldn't be any different than another part of the network. It would just be more density if you think about it.
Could you clarify, I know it's so late, that if we, if you connect where the current trail ends and bring that south, that light blue line, who owns that land? I mean, is that, is that viable from a land ownership perspective?
We would have to deal at the corner with the current landowner we're talking about. And then I believe it transfers to Flummerfeld. And we've worked with Mike Flummerfeld on some other projects. And it seems like he'd more appeal to a business case as to what we need.
That's a really teeny tiny stretch as opposed to going all along the river.
Well, in in this alignment, like pretty much all of the blue, even with the current landowner, it's not cutting through the farm field. It's not impeding any of that operations in its exact same circumstance on Flummerfeld's property. It would just be along the tree line.
Okay, let's, we talked about this enough that we can get a motion?
I'll, I'll start. I'll try option three, move option three.
Second.
All right, any discussion? You want to read it out so everybody knows that, is that the way you want it, the way it's exactly written? So we're clear what
I mean, a lot of this stuff is so up in the air.
Okay.
It's just pausing efforts to connect.
Yep, that's one.
Allowing time for South Dayton Project to be completed.
Right.
Staff would continue monitoring the situation for the development. So
That's it.
And then reprioritize the funding for South Fourth and possibly Moore Park as well.
Yes.
Okay, that's one, make sure you And it does or does not include programming in, I'll call it the cyan colored, the light blue colored trail, not advocating for or against, I'm just asking, is that part of the motion or not, or part of this option?
No, it's not part of the option.
You'd want to probably add it in. For a little extra context on that, we do have a project in the fifth year of the CIP for Skunk River Trail. We would prioritize that. We had anticipated doing a TAP application for federal funds this coming year that we'd we'd gear towards whatever our direction is in this location.
So the point is, it wouldn't fall off the radar. It's just something that would be, it'd still be in the mix. It's just
Yep. You could direct us to to see programming that.
Then I would add that to the to the motion to add, what am I sure you're calling it?
Program the connecting the Iowa Creek Trail down to Southeast Sixteenth.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
I add that to the motion. There's three things, there's three, three things.
So you're adding that to the motion, but that still involves dealing with the landowner that you've been beating your head against for how many years?
It's very different.
It does change the conversation. It changes from a permanent easement, which they've had reluctance to, to a temporary construction easement that would go away after the construction's complete. And I think, given, given our experience with the property owner, I think taking a pause on the north side may help us facilitate the approval of that temporary construction.
That's helpful. Thank you. All right, those, you think you got it?
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Yeah. All right, those that have motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, move on to item number thirty five.
Evening, Mayor and Council. We'll be brief. The, the city retained Envision, an architecture, a design firm, to help us with the conceptual design for the new animal shelter facility located on Dayton Road. We've completed the conceptual design phase, and now we're ready to move into the process of developing the schematic design. to move into the process of developing the schematic design, design development and construction documents. So we have, in working with Envision, developed a draft agreement. I understand this afternoon, the council received a series of comments after there had been some time to digest the draft document. And so we would ask tonight that, in lieu of approving the agreement as it's been presented to you, that we instead be directed to go back and work with Envision to make those adjustments to the scope as, as described in the email that the mayor sent out this afternoon. Many of these are typographical issues in nature. There are some substantive ones, however, and the most significant, I think, among these relates to the overall scope of the project and the fee associated with that scope. So the way that the contract is currently drafted, it includes the prospect that approximately, approximately a million dollars worth of, of ad alternates would be included in the design, such that if funding was available, because we were particularly successful with fundraising, we would have the ability to award that. After some discussion, it appears more appropriate to pare that back and develop a project that we know we will be able to complete with the funding that is anticipated in the budget. So I, I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to describe that in more detail.
No, I thought you, you did an excellent job of summarizing it. It's just, as it was presented, a million dollars in alternates is an awful lot of alternates, you know, designed and paid for, and if they don't get awarded, you're still paying at least 75% of the fee, you know, to design it, and they may never get used. And it just seems like the opportunity to try and put as much money into the pro, actual project, the construction project. And if we get fortunate and bids come in below, below the estimate, including an alternate or two, then the extra money could be rolled into a, a maintenance fund or an enhancement fund, you know, in the future that they could use for additional equipment or replacement, or start saving for an additional, you know, improvements in the project. And as you mentioned, too, a lot of it's just, it's just, it's, some of it's just tweaking, and some of it's just formatting. But I think that it sounds like Envision's done a great job. You're satisfied with the consultants that have been working on it. Maybe Chief, you can comment on that. So it's not, it's not, no issue with the, with the architect whatsoever, it's just more or less, just trying to get this home, so it really is a good agreement that represents what you're trying to accomplish, so.
Yeah, to this point, they've been very responsive, easy to work with, answered questions, gotten us information. So I, I don't think there's any issue with them at all.
Yeah, I think the agreement that I sent to them was partly from ours as well, too. So we're saying that we wanted to tweak some of the issues and make sure that it represents what's best for the city and also scope of work, so. Any questions?
I'm a little confused. What, so what are we, what are we, what should we do here with?
So I just, I would just, instead of approving, you know, a contract or a change order, basically, it's just a, a motion directing staff to work with Envision, just to modify the agreement regarding scope of work, fees and other minor changes, as appropriate, and then just place on a future agenda for approval.
Or could we approve it subject to, I mean, sometimes we, we, we make a motion to approve things subject to modifications.
No.
No.
We still, we still, we need to work with Envision to determine what's the impact on the fee relative to these scope changes.
So then is it, is it alternative three then? We're referring back to staff?
I, I, I think we're asking for you to direct us to
Work with.
Work with Envision to make the changes to the agreement that were reflected in the mayor's email, and then to present back to the council again, a revised agreement for the architectural design services.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Other discussion? Those who hear the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Amelia, we see you again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so this next item is an annexation. It is one of four Iowa State parcels south of city limits. And when you initiated it, it included initiation of a non-consenting property to create more uniform boundaries. As you can see, it's surrounded on three sides by the Research Park property. Across the street, I will also note, is Iowa State land, so it is not likely it will be annexed in the future. The Iowa State Research Park property is designated employment, so that indicates a future land use of Research Park, so everything's in alignment there. It could be zoned RI or general industrial in the future, and we'll do a master plan regarding infrastructure and traffic with the rezoning. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and we did include a letter from the Washington Township trustees in opposition, and, and staff did communicate with the non-consenting property owner, that they are, they are opposed to the annexation. Staff is recommending approval, including with the non-consenting owner, as the annexation's consistent with AIM 2040, and it is to create more uniform boundaries. Questions?
Questions for Amelia.
I don't remember ever having input from township trustees. That's new. Who are these people, and why would they object to this?
Sure. So township trustees have a couple duties, but one is collecting levy for rural fire departments. And so when we annex property, it does impact their budget. And so we do, under state code, have to notify them of annexations, and they are invited to a consultation. And I think Washington Township in particular is concerned about impacts to rural fire budgets, and that's why they commented.
And is that the only variable they consider?
Yeah, that's, they're limited to rural fire, maintenance of rural cemeteries and fence line viewings. Those are their three duties.
Okay.
All right, I declare a public hearing on the annexation of these two proposed properties south of Iowa State Research Park at 4140 South 530th Avenue to be opened. Is there anyone who wants to address council tonight under this? Thank you for enduring a long council meeting.
Yep.
Can you introduce yourself?
Uh, my name's Kyle Clark. I'm the resident of 4140 530th Avenue. This whole scenario has been kind of a trial and tribulation of stuff. We moved there 10 years or 11 years ago.
Excuse me, are you the property owner, or you said you're, or a renter?
I'm the owner.
Thank you, thank you.
We spent a year cleaning that property up before we could even move into it. It was rental prior to us. Took a bunch of buildings down, a bunch of trees down. This was before McFarland Clinic was there. This was before the aggro vision thing was there. It was before anything was there. Grew up in Story County, grew up in Nevada, my wife grew up in Nevada. I've worked in Ames my entire life. Living in the country was kind of our dream. My father-in-law used to land, used to farm all the land that Iowa State purchased from the Belmont family. This will be the second house I've lived in from the Belmont family. I personally know the guy that owned my house. His name was Homer Belmont. If he knew Iowa State owned that land right now, he'd be upside down in his grave. Iowa State tried to buy my property. One of their selling points to me, to sell my property was, it is imminent that you are going to be annexed. You don't want to be annexed, because you know what annexation does? Raises your property taxes. Okay, so we couldn't come together on a price. Bummer for me, right? The day my annexation papers, these papers right here, got delivered, the president of the research facility happened to be walking by my house, walking, the day of my father-in-law's celebration of life, knocked and said, hey, just seeing, if you want to see any pictures of what we're going to build around your house, just seeing, if you'd be interested, we know you don't want to sell, but if you would be interested in signing a right of refusal, first right of refusal, we'd throw 10 grand at you to do that. Wouldn't throw 10 grand at me to buy my, buy my house. Wouldn't even acknowledge the letter that I sent them. Wouldn't even give me a phone call saying, no. So now I'm being annexed. They said, oh, we're going to stay out of it. We're not going to have any part of this. This is whatever the city wants to do. So now I'm getting annexed, because we want straighter lines. So down the road, when they think they're going to get my house, it's easier. I don't understand what I'm gaining by 40% property taxes raising. I called Planning and Zoning. Their answer to me was, oh, you're going to get fire, and you're going to get city police. I don't want their fire department. I'd rather have West Story. I don't want their police, they're slow. Story County Sheriff's got more jurisdiction. They patrol that road more than city does. Place is a freaking drag racing thing. City doesn't care. What am I going to gain by you guys taking my land? Nothing. Absolutely nothing. Matter of fact, I'm going to gain bills, because sooner or later, you're going to come to me and say, hmm, you got a hook to our sewer department now. I've got a perfectly good septic system that works just fine. You going to pay me for that? Nope. Then you're going to say, I got a hook to your water. It's going to be one thing after another. Plus, now all of a sudden, I have to abide by all the city codes instead of Story County codes. I'm already having Iowa State build big buildings around me, no different than your 12-foot setback crap with the Mary Greeley and all that. They're going to park all kinds of implement stuff around me. I'm a farm boy. I'm okay with that. But I'm not okay with somebody just coming and saying, for straight line purposes, we're going to annex your land. Why is that going to matter? Oh, because we won't know who's going to plow in front of your house. I'll plant the damn road. I don't care. Leave my land alone. That's all I want, is to be left alone. Iowa State won't get off my case. Now I've got this to deal with. I only make so much money a year, guys, and you're going to raise my property taxes for zero, nothing, just so you can have straight lines. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, close to the hearing. Is there's multiple options on, on entertain motion, one of the options?
I've got a question for Amelia. Several years ago, when we annexed the land that's now Scenic Valley, we left two properties in between, along GW, in between North Ridge and Scenic Valley. And I think I was on council then, but I'm trying to recall, kind of, this, it seems like that was a very similar situation.
Yes. I, I believe those properties are being annexed now as part of the work for development.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. I guess in terms of more uniform boundaries, you know, it's not with those properties along GW Carver, those are being annexed now, because they're, they would be islands otherwise, right? Which is something we have to annex. Uniform boundaries, you, you could choose to not annex the property owner. I think implications might just be a little bit more complicated to run, gosh, water. It's, water is currently in university to, it'll probably be logically extended south along the frontage, so we might need an easement with the county, instead of the property owner to use it right away. And then, you know, as Iowa State develops that land with road paving, I don't know if that could add a layer of, of complication with, like a special assessment or something. But it, you know, those are the complications. It's not that, it's not a situation of an island where we have to take it in.
Okay, other questions?
If you think about development of the city beyond this, and I don't know if we have a map or the ability to look beyond that, could you give us just sort of a sense of the bigger picture than just this?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's cut off. I believe the Iowa State Research Park here, let me just pull up a map to confirm, I'm sorry, has these four parcels, they're pictured, but cut off. And so that, that'll be part of the master planning for, for this area. So eventually, those will be annexed and developed as well.
When you say those four parcels, you're saying?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The Iowa State Research Park blue is the northwest quadrant.
Yes.
Then you'd have going to the east, south and southeast. Is that correct?
That's correct. And let me just make sure there aren't immediate, like, short-term plans for the rest of that area. But that's, that's what I'm aware of in terms of research park expansion.
There is the future land use map in our packet, too.
Oh, that was helpful of me.
There.
Great. Yes, so we show that immediate growth area are limited to those research park properties in that area. The Iowa State land is shown as urban reserve on this map, and so is areas to the south, but that's a longer term growth area. It's not immediately servable by city infrastructure.
And then, would it, would we be considering annexing the land to the west? The Iowa State land?
I mean, if Iowa State were to voluntarily apply for annexation, we could. They're shown as urban growth. I, I just don't know if I, we could foresee that happening.
Wouldn't that create an island, then?
At that point, we would have to.
Yeah, but if, if Iowa State were willing to be annexed, then, then we could look at Right. this individual parcel as part of that.
You'd have to, because it'd go on island.
Yeah.
All right. Sir, any further questions? Otherwise, an entertained motion on one of the alternatives?
Are there any other precedents we should consider? I appreciate that one that you raised, Amber, but we, we try to be consistent in this, and I, and I appreciate you stayed really late tonight, sir, and made, you were as articulate as I've ever heard anyone in making a pitch for why not annex. So leave feeling like you were heard, and you did a good job of articulating this. We have to think about consistency with respect to how we deal with those situations. Are there any other examples that we should be considering?
I think, you know, with Amber's example on George Rushington Carver, we have similar situation along Hyde right now, too, where those property owners were left out from uniform boundaries previously, and now are being annexed with, to prevent creation of an island. So I, I think we have left properties out with annexations before, instead of creating more uniform boundaries, and then eventually we do end up having to annex them.
Yeah. And so I'm, I'm flexible in what council will do. So people buy land anywhere in proximity to a growing community, at some point, their property is going to be subject to annexation. And so even if we were to take a pass tonight, I don't feel it'd be in our lifetime at some point. I think it's likely that the land to the west will come into the city, and at that point, the council won't have a choice. Then it's sort of, it we have state code that we have to follow. So I'm, I think I go either way tonight on this.
I, I don't see a strong argument to, to force the annexation. And unless people want to discuss it more, I would move option two.
Second.
Which, which is?
The 100% voluntary annexation of only the ISURP property.
Excludes this person's property. Yep. All right, Zune second. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
That's right.
Aye.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
All right, very good. Very good. Thank you for coming. We'll move on to item number 37.
Paving, oh.
Go ahead.
Sorry. This is the paving exception for driveways over 300 feet in length. You initiated it at your last meeting. The direction with initiation was to allow zoning board of adjustment to approve it, as they'd have more discretion to determine if standards, especially around public nuisances and character of the area are met. So that was what was drafted. Just to note, we are recommending approval. This length is, is pretty uncommon to have a driveway of this length in the city. It will probably only affect a few properties. And if you approve this ordinance on first reading, we will be recommending waiving rules to complete second and third on August 12th with the other driveway amendments that are on, on that agenda.
And this is put on the agenda at council's request, too. They already talked about this. All right. Declare public hearing on zoning text amendment to create a partial paving exception for long driveways exceeding 300 feet. Is there anyone who wants to address council on this topic? Declare public hearing to be closed. Entertain motion on first passage of ordinance.
Move on first.
Second.
Roll call.
Junk.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
So just like you asked, the, what, what all is being covered by this? Just can you describe, is this just putting in sprinkler systems in your administrative area, or?
Yeah, so it's increasing the water density in the sprinkler systems in lane one and two, where the battery electric buses are currently housed. We'll be adding a fire door at all the door openings, and then it'll update the fire panel system.
So it's primarily sprinklers, fire alarm panels, and putting in a couple of doors, it sounds like. Is that right?
Yeah, the largest scope of the project is those sprinkler, upgrading that fire, water density in that sprinkler system.
It seems antithetical to be putting water in electrical buses, but anyway, but anyway.
Yeah.
But it's code required, right?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Have a nice night.
You, too.
Morning, you mean. Morning, yeah.
Good morning.
All right, move on. Number 39, modifications of municipal code for renewable energy buyback program. Any questions for Mr. Com or Don? Do you have some comments to make tonight?
No, he doesn't.
I do not.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Com, Mr. Com?
Doctor. Thank you. Wow.
We've been here so long, he got his PhD while I was sitting over there, so.
So did Jeremy.
We now shall call you.
Doctor.
This is what happens when a meeting goes for five hours.
It's okay. I'm not, I'm not hurt.
No, it's not.
I mean, it does, it does feel bad, because there are some important changes that are happening here, and I feel badly this is happening late at night.
Okay. Just real quick, so URBs have been working on this for a while. We had a, a current program where we offered a $100 rebate, and then we bought back some of the energy. After meeting with our customers, we've grandfathered to the existing ones, we've created a new program, we've moved a lot more of the money into the rebate programs. We're changing the rebates from $100 to $500, but then we're changing the buyback rate to match that price energy that we would have bought on the, on the open market. So it, it does several things. It's beneficial for us. I've talked to several of our customers. They think this is great, and it'll really kick off a boom here in the next six months, as there's still federal money, and we're hoping that we'll see a lot more retail solar installed in the next six months.
So when you say grandfather, is it the, the property owner, or is it the property itself?
So it's the property owner. So if, if you were, if you had solar in your home, you benefited from that energy, you benefited from the rebate. If you sold that, then they would fall under the new program, because we eventually want to transfer everybody to the new program.
You lost me. So my, would my buyer be able to take advantage of this?
No, they would, yeah, they would go on to the new program.
They go on the new program?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, we'll open up public comments. Anyone address council on this topic tonight? We'll close public input. Entertain motion on first reading of ordinance amending chapter 28 of the municipal code.
Move on first.
Second. Roll call.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Rollins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Entertain motion on second reading of ordinance for zoning property located at 57 258 220th Street, East 13th Street, from Agricultural A to General Industrial GI.
Move on second.
Second.
Roll call.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Rollins.
All right, move on. Disposition and communications to council. There's one that was sent out by Jeremy regarding Keith Abraham. It was a memo in response to an email from Jeff Bryant. Is council interested in referring this issue to staff and the traffic engineer, as alluded to in the last paragraph of Keith Abrams' email?
He would like to prohibit parking on the end of the street during game day. So usually, would, traffic engineer would contact all the property owners, see if they agree with that request.
I would move that we refer this to staff.
There a second?
Is that, does the staff want to see this?
You know, we welcome, we welcome
I'm asking this, because we sent, but we sent so many referrals, and, and we're told that you send too many referrals, so.
I'd have to defer to your wisdom on this. It's a council policy.
Okay.
I, I don't think we've had any complaint. I mean, I don't think from a traffic engineering standpoint, we've recommended doing this. So it's really the property owners, or that property owner. That's why I have to confirm that there are other people who are interested.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
And does say the traffic engineer can bring a recommendation back to council for action, and it could be recommendation, making no changes also, too.
Right. Yeah, it's whether he wants staff to spend time on this issue. Is that warranted?
All right, is there, those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. The other thing is, is that council, we got an email yesterday from Ann Taylor at Dogtown U.
Oh, yeah.
And usually, our cutoff is, you know, the previous week, but it's pretty time-sensitive. She's asking about, you know, free parking because of the project going on on, on Welch Avenue. Would council be willing to place that on a future agenda for consideration of that request?
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Reports from a governing body, Discover Ames, anything tonight?
Yeah, real quickly, there was a really interesting presentation. So the Discover Ames has a business development group that is really doing some forward-thinking marketing efforts, and they, they gave me three chat, they said something that's very important, I want to bring back to council. They said, if the city is not worth visiting, people won't live there. And I never really thought about that. It was very helpful. And the, the three things they said, they, they believe were challenges, transportation to Ames, so we have conferences and things, it's sort of hard to get sometimes from Des Moines to Ames, evening entertainment, and facilities and amenities. So I had, that was helpful for me to think about. We want to make Ames a great place to live and attract new people, but from the perspective of a visitor, that was helpful. And then, secondly, there's a conference center steering committee that has formed. So they're moving forward with thinking through the possibility of bringing a conference center to the link. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Anything from Ames Regional Economic Alliance?
Nothing new.
Story County Management did meet last week. I was not in town. Chief Higgins went to my place. I'll get a report from him that we can give at a future council meeting. Transit.
We met, and both of the main items were on our agenda tonight.
Very good. Council comments. Anita, anything from you tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Gloria?
Rummage rampage starts on the 25th, that is later this week. And come down and see me. I'll be there for 40 hours over the course of the rampage. Looking forward to it. That's it.
Amber?
Nothing for me.
Tim?
Real quickly, the hats off to planners and volunteers for Midnight Madness, terrific event. The largest number of runners since 2018, huge after-party downtown. I think the Midnight Madness is back. And then I also want to give a shout out to the Roosevelt. I've gone to the concerts the last two weeks. Just a great community event. It's free. We had a Hispanic band that played, there was lots of dancing, and a great turnout. So these are volunteers that make these events happen, so shout out to the Roosevelt organizers.
Thank you. Rachel?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Is Amelia still on?
I'm still here.
All right. Amelia, bless, bless your heart.
Sorry, sorry I wasn't able to make it down.
That's okay.
You're good.
I'm not sure if I'll be able to be there for the first one in August, but I will be here for the second one in August for sure, because classes start before then. I don't really have anything new since last time. The joint meeting is on October 22nd, again, from 5 to 7 in the Memorial Union Summer, like normal, but that's really all I've got.
Thank you. Was that it? Entertain, entertain motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.[1630.33]